...rich history that we have here. So basically, what I accomplished in these first four years is, one, first established our positioning and what the roles and responsibilities are through resolution 2019-04. We established what I basically, what the role is and define what the positions, functions are, as well as what we define what the terminology is. Basically provided new guidance on creation of a new website for the city historian. And we're now working as well with the city clerk to actually expand that a little bit more, utilizing our Laserfish system. I basically consulted with four different cities, as I said, in city historian role, working with individuals trying to define what a city historian does and basically what value we can working with, with historical societies. I have been able to establish a quite vast network, historical societies through, as I get to travel around a little bit, I walk around and I meet with docents from a variety of different places. Most recently, was sitting up in Sonoma, talking with some of the individuals up there. And it's actually restoked conversations where they're now looking to bring back as city historian inside the city of Sonoma has been vacant for the last eight years themselves. I'm also been published as well here, and I've been working with a lot of academia groups and that. So as I kind of expand and try to understand the history of Gilroy and some of our meetings, I've actually been able to talk with other professors and get other informations leading into the history of our backgrounds. I've been also working with the city clerk's office, trying to help with the maintenance of the minutes, ordinance, and resolutions. And so what I've been actually doing is trying to update the Laserfish system and trying to do the transcriptions, trying to get the text. So basically, when it's not able to read it and what it is, you can key search in and be able to actually do more definition of what's in there, especially within the first several years where everything was handwritten. The machines don't recognize handwriting, so it has to be transcribed in order for you, in order to read it. So I've been able to provide what those would be, as well as various other documents like the 1870s City of Gilroy Act Incorporated. I've created over tons of different little notes and little research projects throughout the 1800s, as I turn around and start to turn around and writing my own little memoir book on Gilroy itself and our history and origins. So I've been actually putting together a lot of little stuff, which has come in handy with some of the sideline conversations I've had with folks. As well as, I have also worked with revising the summary of the historical statement on the city website. We revamped it and renewed it and got it up to where it's status now. Three articles have been published so far. I've did the paper on Bodfish, El Camino Real, and on Oldham himself, our very first mayor of Gilroy. So one of the things I want to look to is look for the future, what some of the things I'm looking to is, as a second term proposed goals, is continuing to work with the city clerk's office, working to expand and trying to get where we're at. I've already done over, over roughly 16 years worth of years of transcription of the 150 years we've had out there and trying to get us to get a little bit more. So as I continue to work on Laserfish, wanting to expand that knowledge there. I'm also trying around and starting to toy with making a new piece on the website, calling it "Through the Eyes of a Town Clerk." So basically, as the city clerk sits here and records our meetings and our agendas and all this stuff as part of their task, what does the history of Gilroy look like through their eyes? And so now I'm taking everything that I'm transcribing and writing brief summaries by year, what were the major accomplishments achieved here in the city of Gilroy through each of those minutes? One of the things I also would like to do is turn around and have a full listing of everyone who has been sitting on a die through our history from the mayor's seat to the council members, just a short bio of who each one of the individuals were and what their contributions were. I'm also looking to add new papers and publications as I continue my writing on and working with Gilroy. And then also look at pursuing new ways of recording and sharing additional information, whether it be through YouTube videos or whatsoever. So I'm looking at other media sources to turn around and share more information. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Very nicely done. Any questions? No? All right. Thank you very much. Okay. And Jada, item 3.2. This is a public comment for items not on the agenda but within our subject matter jurisdiction. And if I hit this, it should tell me how many speakers we have, right?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have 14 speaker cards here.
Okay. I don't see it here, but that's okay. We have 14, so we'll set the timer for two minutes each. And if you have asked to speak, if you could please come sit in the front row, at least the first five or six people that are called, that way you'll be ready to go when the next person calls. All right. You want to call them?
Yes, Madam Mayor. First is Hazel Quintero, followed by Mateo Rodriguez, followed by Julian Martinez.
Okay. Good afternoon, city council and community members. I'm here to speak upon a topic majority of the community present here aren't aware about. Recently, some of the members of the council rejected a presentation about the implementation of a youth center made by Latino youth here in Gilroy. We have been coming here for the past nine months, fighting the same fight, and all we get in return are statements and promises from the council that are never met. We want the council to let us know why they rejected our youth, felt forced to say yes or no, yes or no to them, and make the decision to put certain people on the agenda. Our youth deserve a voice, a safe space to go to, and their positive lessons, a place that's able to fit all the youth in Gilroy and deserve to be heard by the elected officials of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Mateo, and I'm 12 years old. I'm here to talk about how the city is willing to build a 20 million practice Sharks Stadium but not a youth center. I think it's not fair how we need a youth center, but they want to build something that is not as important. I also think that it's not fair, the city council, to not allow youth to give a presentation and standing up for kids that are on the streets and need somewhere to be welcomed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Julian Martinez, followed by Xavier Garcia, followed by Michaela Character.
Good afternoon, city council members. I'm here to talk about the city building a youth center or a community center in the east part of Gilroy. I think a community center would benefit the city because it would keep youth out of the streets doing things they shouldn't, such as smoking or fighting. I've also noticed that brown youth have been ignored. Youth have also been advocating for a community center for months. Yeah, no actions have been taken. I'd like to see actions taken soon for the bettering of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next speaker? Yeah. Try to speak into the microphone, please.
All right.
Perfect. That's great.
Hello, council members. My name is Michaela, and this is my first time speaking up here, but I feel like that it was needed. I'm worried about the fact that GADAS has been here for the past months, and the city has not moved a finger to help or even consider a youth center. You guys said that you would do something or promised that it would be happening, but nothing has been done. The effort GADAS youth puts in the work is a lie, and you guys couldn't even let them present a short presentation. After all their work, I think you should at least let them at least present what they made. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Makaya Character, followed by Lena Rivera, followed by Marty Estrada.
Hello, council members. My name is Makaya, and I usually don't speak at places like this, but I feel the need to do it today. I think that kids need a safe place like GADAS to go to. You guys don't see that kids are being affected by not having places to go where kids can do good things and be better people. The kids who get in trouble don't have a place to feel accepted and safe, and you guys are getting in the way of having a space like GADAS, but bigger and better for kids to go. I think you guys should allow GADAS to present their ideas, and maybe you guys can consider creating a safe space for kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good aftern- good aft- good afternoon, city council. My name's Leanna. I'm a lead intern at GADAS's office. I want to talk about the youth center. You guys should have built it because the young kids at our city are getting in trouble in the streets. We've been working on this project for the last few months, and all we get in return is being denied by our own city leaders. You guys should have at least let a few youth speak instead of denying them presenting their work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Marty Estrada, followed by Xavier Garcia, who actually did not speak prior, followed by Gabriela Mendoza, followed by Remundo Armanderos.
Good afternoon, everybody, council members and the public. I want to start with the invocation. The person that spoke the invocation says, "Be wise and use wisdom." Yet we come here month after month to address a key issue in our city. The residents of Gilroy want a youth center. And every time we come here, we get, we get crumbs off the table. We have to go through this process of speaking one minute, two minutes, but nobody on this council wants to put on the agenda, for exception of two. The public is holding you accountable, Mayor. Why isn't this on the agenda? We need a youth center. There's 16,000, 16,000-plus kids, according to the U.S. Census of 2020, that need a youth center here in Gilroy, not including the ones that are 18 and a little bit older. We have yet to think about a youth center for Gilroy. You quickly marched down the road to connect with the Shark Stadium or the Shark Organization to have something built here in Gilroy, a Shark Ring, which the city's not paying anything but a bond that's going to be required that they're going to pay. Why don't we put a bond together to get a youth center here in Gilroy? The community wants a youth center. The public wants a youth center. But every time we come here, nobody wants to put this issue on the agenda. It's like you're hiding it. But the public's not going to stay silent. This is a shame on the city. If you want to use wisdom, if you want to think about going forward and building a youth center, there's 16,000 youth that can use this youth center here in Gilroy, yet we have none. Yet we have something on, on, on the city, on the website, city website, that says we have a youth center, but it's untrue, it's unfactual. We do not have a youth center. So I'm calling everybody here, including the new council member, Klein, to vote to put this on the agenda. Everybody has a responsibility here to think about our youth in this city, but nobody's thinking about the youth. That's why they're getting arrested. That's why they're getting in trouble. That's why they're hanging out. At GADAS, we are doing more than we should, we should be doing. We're inviting all kinds of youth to come to our offices for after-school activities because there is no youth center. I want you to think about that. We're never going to stop until you put this on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Xavier Garcia, who actually did not speak prior.
Yeah, kind of like piggybacking off of what my brother said over there. Let me pull out my notes really quick. So yeah, you've seen us, I'm pretty sure most of y'all seen us, besides probably the new, new person, nice to meet you. Yeah, we've been coming here for like months, for months and months. And y'all, y'all do listen, I guess, while y'all are here, but afterwards, kind of nothing really gets done after that. We're kind of just ignored, what feels like ignored, because like I said, we've been coming months and months to speak about this. And yeah, like my little friend over there said, Mateo, y'all were willing to put like a Sharks Stadium, Shark Stadium on the agenda, but aren't willing to put a, a youth center. I mean, we're starting to feel ignored after months of coming here and not seeing much progress done with this. So we'd like for y'all to give us some confirmation, if y'all are going to get to this, please let us know when, because the sooner the better. We got kids out on the streets that need to be, I guess, that need a youth center, need somewhere to go, need somewhere to chill, eat, kick back with friends, pro-active activities, you know, stay out of trouble. This is something that we need, and I think it's y'all's responsibility to, I guess, let the public know that this is getting done. And if it's not getting done, let us know, so we can keep advocating for it and get like more people talking about it. Like y'all said or saw in the presentation that we wanted to send, it's not just us fighting for it. You've got like 500 other people who are down for this and want this and think that it's important. So please, inform the public, if it's getting done, we need to know. And if it's not, we still need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Gabriela Mendoza, followed by Remundo Armanderos, followed by Jada Castro.
Good evening, city council. My name is Gabriela Mendoza, and I would like to see more action and have the youth voices being included on the planning of building a large youth center. It is time for their voices to be heard and for you leaders of this community to take action and include every young voice, since they are the future generation of Gilroy. It's not fair to the youth or all residents that they have to join a city project or department in order to be allowed to present their ideas to the city council or even, or to even be taken into consideration. Seems that if they are not working with the city project slash department or have a great relationship with enough city council members, they just won't get their vote to be allowed to present their ideas to the council. All Gilroy residents, especially youth, should be allowed to present their ideas and be taken serious by the city council and administrators. This council should be proud of the youth who have limited and political backgrounds, who come before you to tell you what is needed in Gilroy, which can save a lot of lives, because education and recreation always should be Gilroy's model, not incarceration. And just thinking about those shootings, that is an example right there. We want to prevent those shootings, another shooting here in Gilroy. And let's start with our youth here. Let's start changing their, you know, working with their mental health, you know, not just with Rebecca's Children's Services or like Community Solutions and the school counselors. No, it needs to be larger than that. So I please, please beg you to listen, not just listen, but take action and don't wait for us and our youth, the parents of this community, to reach out to you and kind of beg you to vote for these youth to present something great, something for the future, to prevent those things from happening like those shootings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Remundo Armanderos, followed by Jada Castro, followed by Davina Luna.
So good evening, council. And also, I want to welcome you, Councilmember Klein, as well as I want to thank the chaplain tonight. Both of you came before the meeting started and, you know, introduced yourselves to the young people, so I really appreciate your acknowledgement and making sure they felt welcome. And that's part of the reason why we're here tonight is that these young people have shown a lot of leadership. We have a leadership group that meets every Wednesday, and I invite all of you council members, as well as the mayor, to please attend sometime. Come join us. Come here, these young people. We're here tonight because we feel like their leadership and all the leadership that teachings and lessons and advocacy that we've been teaching them are not really being acknowledged. And I say that because they had requested that they be able to present some of their findings and hard work. Since April, they have gone out and petitioned here in Gilroy at six or seven different petitioning events, surveying, they put together their own survey. These are young people, mind you, that are in eighth grade, seventh grade. When I was in eighth grade and seventh grade, I wasn't even thinking about a petition. I wasn't thinking about a survey. They've been gone out on their own time to survey people. They went to St. Mary's Church after Catholic Mass on a Sunday morning. When I was 14 years old, I didn't get up on Catholic Mass on Sunday morning to go take a survey or survey the public. So I would ask, and it's really upsetting that you all haven't made time for them on this agenda, to acknowledge their leadership and acknowledge your hard work. We're hoping that those young people, all of them sitting in that group over there, and this is in all of them, it's about 14 of them, that you acknowledge them, acknowledge their leadership, and give them the opportunity to present to you all at one of these council meetings, because we regularly are, you know, telling them that they one day can do this and also that their community cares about them. So if you give them time on the agenda, it'll go a long way to make them feel welcome and cared about in the city of Gilroy, where we're all from. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Jada Castro, followed by Davina Luna, followed by Victoria Valencia.
We're going to speak together. Okay.
My name is Davina Luna, and this is Jada, and we, we're here to talk about the youth groups, and we recently came to GADAS. It makes us feel welcome and safe. We are here to talk about how we would like to have a bigger community center to welcome more kids off the streets and kids around Gilroy to help them feel like they, they're belonged here.
And aren't being judged, and to help them stay out of trouble. And we recently heard that you denied us to present on why we need a bigger community center, and we would like to understand why. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Since Davina Luna spoke already, Victoria Valencia, followed by Peter Mandell, followed by Tim Cassidy.
How many more are there? That feels like a lot more than 14.
We have 15 speaker cards.
Oh, 15? Okay. That's fine.
All right. Good evening, Gilroy City Council members and members of the public. My name is Victoria Valencia, and I've been with the Gilroy Chamber for the last four years, and I'm excited to reintroduce myself as the president and CEO. I'm thrilled to be able to continue working with our community partners to make Gilroy the best place to live, work, and play, and plan on updating the council quarterly on issues and initiatives related to workforce development and economic development. This quarter, we're focused on re-engaging with our members and creating a work plan for our workforce development initiative. We plan on taking groups of students on job shadowing trips and look forward to connecting these students with internships and apprenticeships. We're also revamping our current website to include a list of available properties to make it easier for people who want to come to Gilroy to come to Gilroy. We're also updating our economic profiles, so people who are interested and looking to come to Gilroy have that information, and they know the demographics that make up our city. We're excited to be able to continue to bring and keep business in Gilroy, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with the city of Gilroy. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Next speaker?
Peter Mandell.
Is there someone after Peter?
Yes, followed by Tim Cassidy.
Okay. If you're Tim Cassidy, could you please come and sit up in the front row? Oh, you're there. Great. Okay. Go ahead.
Hello. I am, I'm not here to ask for anything. I want to thank the historian for that interesting presentation. I moved to South Valley in 1870, myself, and that's feel, or at least it feels that long. I am the, one of my jobs is I'm president of congregation, AMET, the Jewish congregation serving the South Valley on Monterey Road and Morgan Hill, and I'm here to invite you to a, to a, to an event. We have an event on February 5th on Sunday, which is about 20,000 refugees that fled the Nazi occupation of Austria through, and this was weird to me, Shanghai, China. And so all of, all of these people went through Shanghai in order to escape from Nazi control. The, this is, why would this be of interest to you? We have a presentation from the L.A. Holocaust Museum is coming up from L.A. to be at the event, and Congresswoman Jackie Speer is coming and is one of our speakers, because she recently discovered that her family came to the U.S. through this weird Shanghai passage. So I don't know if any of you happen to know Jackie Speer, but you could come by and hear her as well. So that's it. I just wanted to invite you to attend that if you'd like. It's on Sunday, February 5th at 2:00 P.M. at the, at our temple up on Monterey Road in Morgan Hill. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. And our last speaker?
I wasn't planning on being here today, but because of personal experience, just really quickly, this is kind of an intersection between like the history of Gilroy, health, the weather that we've had lately, the services that we currently have, and then kind of what we're, mission of Gilroy and what we're trying to do here. So basically, my basic story is I graduated from UC Berkeley, I grew up in Los Gatos. We, most of my family actually ended up settling here in Los Gatos, or, excuse me, in Gilroy. My dad died here, my mom retired here, and she moved to live with my brother in Texas, and now I'm the last person here. Well, actually, my older brother's here too, but he's leaving. And I'll be probably leaving soon too. Anyway, the point is, I have, I do suffer from bipolar. It doesn't limit me, but it does become acute in things like weather, and then when you're under certain circumstances. So I actually self-deported. I mean, I literally got myself out of my apartment. That was the final apartment that I lived with my mom. And then I just, all of a sudden, everything collapsed. So I got hit by the weather, I got hit by everybody out of no family resources, and then everything in this, everything spiraled. And so the weather messed me up. I ended up, nobody in the family could support me, so I ended up in the armory, and then everything else worked against me. So I couldn't, I couldn't get bus, you know, access and, and, so I literally went from a UC Berkeley graduate to literally living on the streets, and then I was in and out of hospitals, freezing feet, and I was thrown out of hospitals and treated like a homeless person. And so I know every cop knows me, I've dealt with every single one of them. We've had good interactions and bad interactions, and we won't go into that. Most, I love these guys, they're the greatest. It's just some of them are misinformed, and they don't mistrain, or they don't know what's going on. There's a definite piece that not even just related to cops, but all cops have to do better with interactions with mental health. Again, I'm functional, there are some people that barely are, and then they get treated worse. Okay? And I'll tell you one thing about the, I'm sorry, the last question.
It's two minutes. Everybody gets the exact same amount of time.
The VTA system works, ends up working against you when you try to travel from point to point.
I'm sorry.
And you have mental issues. All right. That's it.
You don't have jurisdiction over VTA here either. Okay. Thank you. Okay?
I have one more speaker card, and it's from Sally Armanderos.
Okay.
Good evening, and welcome to the year 2023. This is my first time here today. And when I was reading your agenda, I noticed under 3.2 that it clearly states, "If council action is requested, the council may place a matter on a future agenda." Well, I think for the last at least six months, you have the youth, the youth that need a youth center come to you, they practically beg you, and, you know, you'll put everything else on the agenda. What does it take for, for you people, Fred, and the rest of you to put these youth on the agenda? They represent Gilroy. You represent Gilroy. They need the youth center. You know, they, you know, they don't have their parents going to PTA meetings, they don't have their parents going to wherever they can afford to take. These kids need a place to go. You know, your responsibility is to take care of Gilroy. That includes the youth. You know, you have your future leaders. Those are diamonds in the rough. Those are kids that get up here and speak, who they see, I'm sure they see a police officer, and they're wondering, "Am I going to get arrested? Are they gonna, are they gonna find out why I'm, I'm sitting in front of a nice fancy house?" These are the kids that need the youth center that come to you. What is it going to take for you people to understand that they want to be placed on the agenda? You even put it here. Why can't you do that? I mean, what does it take out of you? What, 15 minutes of your precious life to hear people that are dying to do something in the future? Because those are our leaders. I don't care, you know, we have, you all, we've been through this so many times over and over again. The highest percentage of kids, young people that are incarcerated are from Gilroy. Do we want to continue being number one in that category?
I'm sorry.
I know, two minutes.
Two minutes. Right. Thank you.
But put them on the agenda, man. Grow up.
All right. Done?
Yes, I have no other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right. Moving on to item number four, reports to council members. Councilmember Braco. Councilmember Armanderos.
I wish everyone a happy Lunar New Year, and again, as you stated earlier, Mayor, send our condolences and, you know, empathy to the victims, families, and community of Monterey Park.
Councilmember Marx.
I attended the Santa Clara County Habitat Implementation and Governing Committee last week, and the main item that they were talking about was the purchase of the O'Connell property off Pacheco Pass with grant money that will further protect all the wildlife that is up there. And again, they were talking about the burrowing owl and how it's being protected, and it looks like they're going to have a lot more babies this year by a lot of the resources that they have done. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor Blakely. From the Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee, we reviewed the fiscal year 23 first quarter transit operations performance report, and bus ridership totaled 4.6 billion, which is an increase in 35% over compared to fiscal year 2022. VTA ridership has been recording a gradual recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. Overall, the system ridership, bus and rail, is approximately at 63% of pre-pandemic levels levels during the first quarter of fiscal year 2023. We had a presentation on the Transit First Policy Framework. Transit First Priority Policies are used by cities to improve travel speed, reliability, and overall appeal of public transit and make trans, public transit operations more cost-effective, deriving more public value per dollar spent on transit service. VTA shared the San Jose policy, San Jose's policy with member agencies and inquired if other cities are interested in their own policy or potentially a countywide policy. San Jose's recently adopted Transit First Policy is an example of how cities can structure transit priority policies. Travel speeds for public transit that operate at street level are generally in decline across the United States. Average VTA bus travel speeds have declined about 20% over the past three decades. That has resulted in service that is less useful for riders, has worsening on-time reliability, and is less cost-effective for VTA to operate. When travel speeds decline, VTA must add additional buses to routes, which raise the operating cost. Three decades of adding buses to slowly, to slowly, to slower routes amounts to a 70 million inefficiency that VTA bears annually. Growth in the resulting travel demand, combined with heavy reliance upon automobiles for travel, is causing congestion that slows down public transit, decreased ridership, and generates, generates less community value per public dollar spent. Reversing these trends can be initiated by cities through street design and travel signal policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein.
I have no report.
Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Was a bit busy meeting with some folks. I want to, first of all, thank the California Welcome Center, Mr. Frank Johnson, the executive director, for meeting with me last week. I appreciate your, your commitment and your vision that you have in store, and I look forward to working with you. Next, I had an opportunity to meet with the general manager of the Hampton Inn, Eric Gethardt, along with the Poppy Jasper International Film Festival Director, and I'm glad to announce that there'll be a partner hotel, working closely with the Poppy Jasper Film Festival, so I appreciate all the work that he's going to be doing to make that a successful event. Next, I and Councilmember Carol Martz, we had the pleasure of meeting with one of our new downtown business owners, building owners, Mr. Dave Leal, and I want to thank him for his dedication, his commitment, and for his investment in downtown, and we're excited with all the projects that he's going to be doing in our downtown, and it's great to see somebody really being proactive. And finally, you know, I'll be attending the Roto Care Free Medical Clinic Open House tomorrow at 6:00 P.M. If anybody wants to go, it's at 9300 Rent Avenue. That's it.
Thank you. I too will be at that Roto Care Open House. Okay, my report, a couple of things. South County Youth Task Force was to have had its first meeting of the year last week, but it got postponed due to several schedule conflicts, so that's yet to happen. On the VTA Board, we have a chairperson, Pat Burt, who is a member, a council member in Palo Alto. Vice Chair is Supervisor Cindy Chavez from District 2. I am chairing the Administration and Finance Committee, which is a board standing committee. And the upcoming board actions that I think would interest this council have to do with the BART Phase 2 project. And to give you an idea of the schedule, the overview of the station refinement work will be before the board in February. The contract amendments for program management services and general engineering will be in the spring of 2023. The award of the construction management services will be in the summer of 2023, and then what they call early work packages. So it's a long process to build BART Phase 2, and of course, a lot of money that is attempting to be front-loaded from the Measure B money, but we've got it all evened out, where cities are still getting their local streets and roads improvement money as well. But those are the things I wanted to share from, from those meetings, and that is my report.
Mayor, I'm sorry, can I, one more announcement. I just want to make sure to acknowledge all the folks that were involved in the Don Christopher Memorial that we attended at Christopher High. So I want to thank the school district, all the folks that are out there that were volunteering. I know the mayor was there, I believe other council members were there as well, and it was an honor to sort of be there and see all the great history that Mr. Christopher brought to Gilroy, so I want to thank everybody for that. Thank you.
Okay, under council correspondence, we have none. Future council-initiated items.
I have something, Mayor.
Okay.
I was approached by the governor of the state of Oaxaca, Mexico, who'd like to ask us to do a sister city with Gilroy. There's a number, or there's a huge number of folks from Oaxaca and Gilroy, and I'd like to, for us to discuss it. It's a great opportunity.
Yeah, doesn't it, okay, doesn't that go through the Sister Cities Association? Does it come through the council?
That's what they've done in the past.
They've done it that way.
Yeah, so they've, they have emailed the Sister Cities Association, so, but I think...
You know, having not been here when we've done that, let me reach out to the Sister Cities Association, see what the protocol is and how we can do that. If that's the will of the council in general, it's, nope. Not that big of a deal to retell to them.
Yeah, no, I think it comes down to volunteer, you know, time, because that's what happens in being the representative last year to that organization. There was a lot of, friction is not the right word, but you have some people that just have relationships with one city and not with others, and so the other city relationships aren't kept up. So it really does need to go through that organization who decides, who determines if there's the manpower to upkeep that. So, and then I would think that's what, they would come to us with what they think they can do and go from there.
And is the Sister Cities Association, is it a government organization? Is it private?
It's private, and they file their own, yeah, tax returns, they have nothing, they're not a government agency at all.
Yeah, but those, but our sister cities are established with our city government through their recommendation. Is that true?
And they're the ones that keep up those relationships, is what I'm saying. The council members aren't the ones that keep up the relationships, so it would need to start with them, to my knowledge, which is what we'll do.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, under consent, the consent calendar, I will start with asking if there's anything to be removed from consent. Seeing none, I'll go to public comment. Do we have any?
No public comment, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment, and I think, oh, I need a motion.
So move.
Is this digital?
Yes, you can touch, if the screen allows you here.
Oh, boy.
So move.
Mine just says waiting. There it is. Does everybody have it?
I have one more person, it's Mr. Klein.
There we go. Okay, so that passed unanimously. Great. Okay, under bids and proposals, we have none. Under public hearings, we have none. Item 10 is unfinished business. Okay, this is appointments to city boards, commissions, and committees with seats vacant as of our last meeting. We asked this to come back for the seats that were still open. Ty, do you have a report that you'd like to give?
Yes, a small report, Madam Mayor. At the end of the appointments from the previous city council meeting, council directed staff to contact the remaining non-appointed applicants and ask if they would be interested in serving the advisory bodies listed. And those would be the Arts and Culture Commission, Building Board of Appeals, Library Commission, Personnel Commission, and Physically Challenged Board of Appeals. And for those, for consideration at tonight's city council regular meeting, staff has contacted the applicants and received three responses from, one from Jan Bernstein Chargan, asking to be seated for the Arts and Culture Commission or the Physically Challenged Board of Appeals. Mr., please forgive me, Joel Young Zhang, Building Board of Appeals, and Ms. Sandra Ramirez for Arts and Culture Commission.
Okay, so before we just get straight into the voting, I'd like to say for the public, we had 23 applicants for nine boards and commissions. That's what we just went through. Eleven of those applicants were not appointed to a board or commission at our last meeting, and six applicants were no-shows for the interview, meaning without advance notice of their absence. Three applicants, as our city clerk just said, resubmitted their applications for consideration tonight, two of whom we did interview. So I'd like to remind the council, right, and the public that each of us uses our own judgment in this appointment process based on many factors, attendance being only one, and that a vote not to appoint is also okay. All right, so with that, I'm going to start with, unless there's any, oh, I need to go to public comment too, don't I? Yes.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question, sorry, I don't, maybe Ty, and again, I appreciate the folks who applied, but whenever we do these sort of, you know, commissions, are we requiring or is it optional for people to interview, come for the interview, or can we still appoint without the interview process?
That is the council's prerogative.
Yeah.
So it, we notify the applicant, all applicants, the certain date of the, of the interviews themselves, but it's council's prerogative to decide whether or not that person should be appointed if they, he or she did not attend the interview process.
Right, no, I understand that. I'm thinking maybe, you know, moving forward after this, because I guess for me, sometimes I like to hear the candidate or the applicant, because there, I think the main question that's come up over the years is, is the commitment, are they able to show up to the meetings and stuff, and it would always be good to hear from the candidate, but again, maybe...
It's for each one of us to consider, the things that are valuable, that should, I don't think anybody looks at just one thing, but that's speaking for myself.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, public comment.
I received no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. So what I'm going to do like last time is I'll, I'll start with Councilmember Braco, and I'm going to start with the Arts and Culture Commission for the longer term, which is expiring 12/31/25. And the two candidates are Jan Bernstein Chargan, Sandra Ramirez, or none. But that's, those are the candidates that have applied for this one. So Councilmember Braco.
Sandra Ramirez, and I want to state that before people go on social media and start spewing your poison, I don't put anybody on a commission that doesn't come to the interview process. We have a attendance problem with our commissions, and if you can't make the meeting and not notify us, then you're probably not going to be showing up. So I won't support people that don't come to the interview. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Armandares.
Yeah, so I would like to say that Jan did notify us. Jan is completely qualified, she's served on lots of commissions over the years, and I thought it was very unfair of some of my colleagues to not vote for anyone when she is a qualified person, a dedicated community person, who did notify her, did notify the council through me, I didn't make the statement that she wouldn't be able to come to the interview because she was serving food to our homeless residents that night. So I'll be voting for Jan for the longer, longer term, and Sandra for the shorter term.
That, that is fine, the statement you made of her absence was when we were appointing, not during the interviews. Okay, Councilmember Marks.
Yes, I will go ahead and support Sandra for the Arts and Culture Commission, and I feel exactly like Councilmember Braco.
Councilmember Hilton.
Sandra Ramirez.
Councilmember Klein.
Sandra Ramirez.
Councilmember Tovar.
Sandra Ramirez.
And I too am voting for Sandra Ramirez, so Sandra gets the 12, the term expiring 12/31/25. So now going to the Arts and Culture Commission term for 12/31/24. Councilmember Braco.
No choice.
Okay, Councilmember Armandares.
Jan.
Councilmember Marks.
No choice.
Councilmember Hilton.
Jan.
Councilmember Klein.
No choice.
Councilmember Tovar.
Jan.
And I am no choice, so that's one, two, three, that's four against. So that was three to four for that shorter term. Okay, that brings us to, so that remains open, unfortunately. All right.
I think that's shameful, folks, it really is.
It's not appropriate.
It is.
Okay, Building Board, we all have our own...
It's appropriate, but...
Building Board of Appeals, the term ending 12...
We can't complain about these positions not being filled with people not being committed if we have perfectly good and qualified community members who are obviously committed, applying for these.
Councilmember...
Even after we've cut down these commissions and encouraged people to disengage.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, we all, you're, we all have our own reasons. Everybody is entitled to their own reasons.
They are, and are they legitimate? Are they, are they impartial? Are they embellished? No, they're not, obviously.
These are, yeah, inappropriate accusations. Building Board of Appeals, we have one applicant for the remaining seat, 12/31/26. Councilmember Braco.
Could you repeat his name, Ty?
I'll say his last, his first name is Joel Young Zhang.
You can just say yes if you want to vote for him, and no if you don't. Okay, Councilmember Armandares.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Saying yes.
And I'm a yes too, so he's appointed to that term. Okay, Physically Challenged Board of Appeals, this is the seat expiring 12/31/26. There is only one candidate, so it's either, you can say yes or no. Jan, Councilmember Braco.
What's her name?
Yeah, who's the candidate? Jan Bernstein Chargan. I'm sorry, I thought we all knew that. Okay?
No.
Councilmember Armandares.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
No.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
No.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And I'm no, so that one fails for the same reasons, and I too feel as Councilmember Braco did when he said why. Okay, that, wait, there are two seats on Physically Challenged Board of Appeals. Wait a second, I need to finish. The next seat, there's an opening for the Physically Challenged Board of Appeals with a shorter term. It expires 12/31/25, same applicant, so I need to go through the formality in case somebody feels differently on the shorter term. Okay, Councilmember Braco. Councilmember Armandares.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks.
No.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yep.
Councilmember Klein.
No.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And I'm no. Okay, so that one also fails. Okay, so we still have openings on library, personnel, and physically challenged.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and we'll be doing our quarterly interviews in March with appointments in April for the next round.
Right.
Mayor, again, can I go back to sort of what I mentioned earlier? And I understand, I mean, it's our choice, our prerogative, but given the importance of this and sort of the feedback, could we not make it a requirement that people show up for that interview?
I don't know that you can make it, we can't even make it a requirement that council members come to council meetings. So, you know, it's just something that voters have to consider, and it's something that we have to consider, that's all it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, so moving on to item 11. Interview and Appointment for the Position of City Historian. This is Toby Eichelberry, who's the only applicant for this position, and he's the incumbent. So I'm going to, Ty, do you have a report to give on this?
No, Madam Mayor, just that we received one application, and it was from Mr. Eichelberry himself.
Okay, I'm going to start by asking council if you have any, well, did you want to give some kind of a, it, you don't need to, I mean, you just gave your presentation, right. Are there council members, any questions? Because I don't, okay, we'll, we'll do it that way.
I see a speech there.
Councilmember Marks.
Do you want to give your speech? I mean, you can before...
No, no, I'm good.
He doesn't have a speech.
I noticed in the staff report that it talks about part of your duties is to go in and do different lessons for students, and also to train teachers, especially those that teach on the, on Gilroy history. And I noticed in what you've accomplished in the four years, none of that was mentioned. Did you do any of that?
No, unfortunately, with COVID, we kind of separated with stuff that was happening, and only that, most of the trunk teachings is actually done with Historical Society, and so I'm as a support person. I've been trying to work with Connie Rogers and trying to determine where the separation of the two is. They actually do most of the engagements with schools and all that. I volunteered services with the school as well, as well as with the local colleges, and trying to say, okay, I'm here and available if they would like me to come in and additionally teach anything else on the history or pinpoint any, any particular items.
All right, since that is one of the qualifications for your job, are you planning on doing at least a little bit of it?
I am open to go to any training whatsoever, I'm putting it out there as offered.
Oh, okay.
And if they are willing to accept, I come in, even with the different various organizations that I have, it doesn't have to just be the school district itself. It could be with the youth groups and all that kind of stuff, I can come in and work with them, or with leadership, I've even proposed to leadership as well.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Klein, did you have a question?
How much time are you putting into this, or that you've done, I'm just amazed by?
It's kind of hard to even count, I did well over 2,000 hours minimum. I put in anywhere from three to four hours sometimes in individual days. It varies from my regular full-time job I have, and as well as being a father. Those take priorities, and so I try to spend free time, kids sleep in, so I get up early, and that's where I'm on, on a computer, doing a little bit of work, and, and a lot of times at lunch breaks and all that, so it adds up over time period. But yeah, I've put over, you're going to work from 2,000 to 3,000 hours in the last four years.
Okay, let me go to public comment. Is there any?
Add my hand up, May- Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Toby, thank you for applying, appreciate it. And I appreciate your work as our current historian and also on the, being on the Housing Advisory Committee with you. I thought that was, uh, you're always very thorough and, and dedicated to the subjects. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Can you tell me about, um, your efforts with the Ammamutson or the different ethnic groups that have been historically in Gilroy?
I haven't worked with them, um, directly.
Or what your plan is to?
My plan, like I said, I'm on a civic side. And so I'm telling more of the story of the history and the growth of Gilroy itself from our government standpoint and how we've, ours has grown in there. As I start to dive into more of the minutes than that, if I see any correlation, that's definitely what I'd like to reach with them and actually have been able to turn that into independent articles or into maybe some, uh, little summaries.
Thank you. Okay, so I would like to go to public comment. If we have anybody who wants to comment on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one speaker card and that's Tim Cassidy.
Okay, on this item, yes. Yeah, but that's public comment on the appointment of a city historian. Okay. Yes, you come up here. And you have three minutes.
Anyway, this, I've just dropped in, so I think it's a great idea. I'm actually an armchair historian and, uh, I had a, you can't technically call it a minor at UC Berkeley in history, but I took enough classes to just fail short of a minor. Anyway, also obsessed with Los Gatos history and now I'm obsessed with Gilroy history, especially Ammamutson. Specifically, my whole family is settled around the development that makes up of, uh, Third Street and the whole, you know what I'm talking about, the whole Third Street development, the Bread Barn, yada, 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 everything to do with there, the old million dollar houses, the apartments, Club Drive, boom. So that trail is my exercise trail. And it's kind of my meditation and my relaxation. And so I know every plaque, I memorize them and, uh, I'm obsessed with them. And so anyway, I think it's great that he's doing this and that we need this. And I think more of McGilroy needs to migrate that way. And so it tends to me, I think the shame is the wealthy people kind of dominate the history and the plaques and the older parts and Latinos kind of are sort of subjugated to Christmas Tree, Hero Park, and they don't really get a chance to kind of migrate in. And really the true history is that. So anyway, I like the idea and, uh, support him. And actually I will throw in my towel here. If I can be any of your help, I would love to be a docent and I could actually walk kids through the trails. And I, I'm fluent in all geography, my major is in geography, environmental science, I'm fluent in Spanish. I can do it bilingually. And again, I'm going to be obsessed with the Ammamutson, so.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, and Toby, thank you for being here. Are there any other questions? Otherwise, um, we can, uh, vote, we'll go down the line and do the same appointment, yes or no, as we've done in the past. Anyone else has questions?
Um, I just have a clarification question. So, um, on the, uh, on the job description, I noticed a little clarification. It says provide resources to the city's Historic Heritage Committee, but that committee was dissolved in January twenty-twenty-two with the streamlined consolidation of city boards and commissions. So if we could update that, just so at least everybody understands that description.
And change it to Planning Commission, because that's where that commission went.
Thank you.
Okay, is that for us, city staff or is that in the, okay, we'll make sure that that is changed to Planning Commission. Okay, Councilmember Bracco. Councilmember Armendaris.
Yep.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And I'm yes too, so thank you for being here.
Thank you, Toby.
And thank you for volunteering to do this for another four years.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, item eleven point two is receive fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, mid-year budget update and adopt a resolution updating the position control list. And Harjot will give us this report.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, members of the community. Uh, Harjot Song is the Finance Director. Uh, I'll be presenting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three mid-year budget update report, uh, as well as a request to update the position control list. Background, the current, uh, biennial budget, which is for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, was adopted back in June of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, in March of twenty-twenty-two, council received a fiscal year twenty-twenty-two mid-year budget update, including adjustments and updates to the position control list. Recently, more recently in September twenty-twenty-two, the fiscal year twenty-two preliminary year-end report, uh, was presented, which included adjustments as well as additional updates to the position control. Uh, we are now in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, so I am before you to present the mid-year update for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. As it relates to focusing on the general fund, the general fund budgeted revenues are sixty-three point six million. Of that, uh, thirty-six percent has been received, uh, roughly about twenty-two point nine million dollars. That's primarily, uh, because most of the, uh, tax revenues, uh, vary on how they are received between when they're actually collected, assessed, collected, and remitted to the city. For sales tax, which is the primary source of the general fund, uh, revenues, which is at twenty-two point six million dollars, we have received those of December, seven point three, um, which represents about four months' distribution. Uh, based on the latest sales tax report, uh, this revenue is projected to come in under budget by approximately four hundred thousand dollars. Our second largest category is, uh, of revenue for the general fund is a property tax, which is budgeted at nineteen point two million, and we have received four point nine million, or about twenty-six percent. And then again, this, there's a lag for this, uh, revenue source as well, uh, between when, uh, it is due, collected, and remitted by the county to the jurisdictions. For the fiscal year twenty-three, we do expect to receive the full budgeted amount for property tax. Next is the utility users tax, which is budgeted at five point five million dollars, and we have received about two point seven. Uh, this is taxes that are assessed on utilities such as gas, electric, and telecommunications. We do expect to receive the full budgeted amount for the utility user sex. For the transient occupancy tax, our budget is one point eight and we have received about seven hundred thousand dollars, or about thirty-nine percent. This does only reflect one quarterly since TOT is remitted, uh, on a quarterly basis. So we're seeing that it's at thirty-nine percent. We do project this revenue source to exceed budget, um, largely given the, uh, activity, economic activity, more travel is happening and we're coming out of this post-COVID era, if you will. For the business license, our budget is seven hundred thousand. We have received about four hundred thousand dollars, or about fifty-seven percent, uh, of the budget. And last but not least is the other revenues, uh, which include charges for services primarily by departments, and includes, uh, intergovernmental revenues that we may get as grants, uh, from other organizations, uh, as well as the general fund administrative charge that's assessed to the other funds. This category is projected to come in at or slightly above budget. Now looking at, uh, the general fund expenditures, the total, uh, budget amount is sixty-five million and we have expended thirty point five million, roughly about forty-seven percent. Overall, the, uh, the fund is tracking, uh, budget and most departments are within or below their expenditure targets. Um, this, uh, chart is illustrative of non-general funds, so this includes various different types of funds, uh, ranging from special revenues, recreation, capital, debt, internal service, or utilities, enterprise, which includes sewer and water and fiduciary fund types. For the fiscal year, we have a budget of eighty-one point nine million and we have, uh, received thirty-four point one, uh, which is roughly about forty-two million, uh, or forty-two percent of budget. In the special revenues category, we, um, we have received six point one, which is sixty-three percent budget. The primary source of revenues are intergovernmental funds, uh, which are a manner of tax sharing or grants that we receive from other regional governments, state or federal. For specific to Gilroy, this includes transportation like gas taxes, uh, SB one monies, uh, Measure B dollars, as well as, uh, public safety grants as well. The next is, uh, recreation, so recreation has a budget of two point one million, uh, and as of year-to-date, it has received one point one million of fifty-two percent. The, uh, the big piece in here is the general fund's contribution of one point five million dollars. Uh, if we were to exclude that, um, we are projecting that the recreation revenues are, um, going to come in slightly higher than budget as it relates to charges for services as more, um, recreation opportunities are made available. The capital and development, uh, category of fund types is budgeted at twenty point six and we have received about five million dollars. Uh, this revenue is largely, uh, in this category come from, uh, development approvals and related, um, contributions that are to the impact, uh, fee funds, if you will. And, uh, depending on when, uh, the project is approved or the size of the project, um, the dollars, um, you know, are not evenly received, so we could receive a larger payment in the second-hand, if you will, as, uh, developments commence. Um, for the debt service, uh, primarily it's just, uh, assessments for, um, the geo-tax bonds that we have. So we do project, uh, we will receive the full levy amount and remit those, uh, over for debt service. For the internal services, uh, the budget is twelve point six and we have received about six point one. Primarily, the revenues are derived by charges to other funds for providing internal services such as, um, IT, fleet, facilities, and such. Um, the next two categories are sewer and water. These are our enterprise, uh, funds, uh, for the utility. Uh, sewer is budgeted at fifteen point eight, uh, million and we have received about seven point two. This reflects roughly about five months of collections in both of these utilities because we do bill our utility in arrears. Uh, we do project the sewer revenues to come in at budget. However, for water, our budget is fourteen point nine million. We have, uh, received six point five. We do project that we will come in slightly under budget. And we, um, although it's not known what the impact of the, um, recent rains are, we could expect there could be some impact as there's reduced landscaping, um, irrigation and so forth, so. Last but not least is again, uh, the agency, uh, category, which is the fiduciary, where city is the fiduciary or trustee. Primarily, the big, uh, item in here is the Highway one fifty-two, uh, debt that we administer in that capacity. And the revenues are derived primarily from assessments, uh, to the parcels. For the non-general fund, uh, category, uh, fund types and the expenditures, we have a hundred and twenty, uh, point nine million budget. Of that, we have expended thirty-nine point six, which is roughly thirty-three percent. In the special revenues category, our budget is, uh, fifteen point two and we have expended four point four. Uh, this is largely our expenses again, uh, related to our infrastructure, our roads and sidewalks, as well as, um, other, other grant-related items. So as grants have, are received or expenses are incurred, we typically, um, see those types of capital, uh, expenses occurring in the, um, latter part of the year after the rain, uh, rain season is out. Or the winter season is out. For the recreation, uh, again, the, um, the, uh, budget is two point one. We have expended, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars, roughly thirty-nine percent of the budget. And again, similar, uh, recreation services are, uh, seasonal, so we'll see, uh, activity kind of pick up in the latter, uh, half of the year. For the capital, uh, and the development, uh, fund types, of the total twenty million, uh, twenty, twenty-one million, we have expended about four, uh, million. The below target spending is primarily in the capital outlay and the traffic impact fee, uh, reimbursement categories. We do expect to receive, uh, uh, impact fee reimbursements, uh, in the second half of the year. And additionally, we're expecting larger projects, uh, will either commence and be encumbered such as the downtown beautification project, um, the interim fire station, as well as the completion of our downtown gourmet parking lot. For the debt service, as I mentioned earlier, uh, you know, it's expended fifty-eight percent of its budget. Primarily, these are semi-annual interest payments and one annual principal, principal payment on the various, uh, debts that the city has. For the internal service category, uh, we have a budget of twenty-one point three. We have expended about seven million, or roughly thirty-three percent. Uh, the primarily, the underspending is in the category of capital outlay, um, for our fleet, IT, and equipment funds. Uh, but we do expect, uh, funds to be expended or encumbered in this latter part of the year, especially in our fleet as we are, uh, being a bit more strategic on how we're procuring, um, our fleet. And then as far as the equipment outlay, you'll recall council in September, approved a energy efficiency project, which is expected to also commence, um, in the latter part of the year, which is a big, big chunk of the budget, uh, in this category. For the sewer funds, um, the sewer fund has expended thirty-eight percent of its budget, or fourteen million. The largest, uh, expenditure in our sewer enterprise is the South Water, uh, South County, um, the plant expansion project. If you were to remove the expansion project, the remaining budget, uh, which is roughly nine point three, which is related to our, uh, operations, we have expended roughly fifty-two million, or fifty-two percent of the budget. For the water fund, uh, we have expended, uh, twenty-nine percent, or roughly, uh, five point six million. And the, uh, of the total budget, about five million is related to cap- capital outlay. Excluding capital outlay, the fourteen point six million is related to operations and we have expended about thirty-six percent of our budget. Uh, it does not reflect all of the, uh, water extraction fees that we have paid. Uh, so we are expecting additional, um, bills to be received and expenditures to be incurred. Next up, we are requesting one, uh, mid-year budget adjustment, which is a recommendation to add a permit technician, uh, position in the Community Development Department, specifically the Building Division, if you will, to improve the current, uh, permit processing times and become compliant with the state law requirements. The cost of this, uh, adjustment is, uh, or this position is hundred and two thousand dollars. And doing a review of the process as well as the, the counter, uh, permitting, permit processing, um, activity, it was noted that the average, uh, building permit activity has increased from fifteen hundred eighty, fifteen eighty-five a year to roughly twenty-two hundred permits in the current fiscal year. Uh, the average service time over the counter is roughly, uh, fifty-nine minutes or, or ranging between fifty minutes to an hour. In addition, we have a new State Assembly Bill two-two, uh, three, four, which just went into effect January first, uh, which has established, uh, time limits for how long, uh, the Building Division or the department can take to do a preliminary review for, uh, completeness of their permit application. And that limit is set to fifteen days. Uh, in looking at our department process, we're, um, you know, above the fifteen-minute mark, so we're recommending that, uh, in, in order for us to be compliant, uh, we go ahead and add this position as well. On this chart, uh, is the general fund forecast. Uh, the city council last received the general fund forecast update in September twenty-two when we presented the twenty-two, uh, preliminary year-end. The, uh, notable change, uh, from, from the last forecast is a downward adjustment of the sales tax revenue that, uh, uh, that's based on the latest projections, as I mentioned earlier. The actual sa- sales tax revenue for fiscal year twenty-two did come in lower and now we're projecting to have a slower growth in fiscal year twenty-three for the current fiscal year as well as next year. Um, the forecast, um, uh, the, the reduction primarily in the, uh, sales tax category is the county-wide pool, which is, um, the bulk of the online, uh, sales that are not, um, easily identified to a, uh, ending jurisdiction. They get, get pulled in a county-wide pool and get distributed on a quarterly basis to the, uh, agencies that are in that county. Um, so sales tax, because it is, uh, one of the largest sources of the general fund revenue, uh, it is very volatile, so we, uh, you know, are definitely, uh, keeping an eye on this one as it relies directly on the consumer, um, you know, discretionary spending, if you will. We're not forecasting, uh, a recession at this time. We are, however, expecting a slowdown in the growth of sales, uh, sales tax for the current fiscal year as well as, uh, next fiscal year. Um, as can be illustrated on the chart, uh, fiscal year twenty-three is now projected to have an operating margin of one point one. This number was three point two million in September. And then for fiscal year twenty-four, we're projected to have a positive margin of one point four million. And for the remainder of the forecast years, we're projecting to remain structurally balanced with some positive margins, uh, essentially stating our ongoing revenues are adequate to cover the ongoing projected costs at this time. Um, and again, just looking at the, uh, chart, we talked about the operating margin. In the fund balance, the council does have a established minimum fund balance requirement, which is thirty percent. Uh, the forecast does illustrate, we project to remain above the thirty percent required levels, um, with, you know, uh, some positive margins here in the current fiscal year, uh, as well as next, uh, while very slim, uh, margins out here. Uh, it's important to note that this, as we kind of head into the next, uh, biennial budget process, um, this kind of sets the foundation, if you will, for, uh, for the upcoming budget, uh, as, as it relates to what kind of additions we can do to the budget. As you know, the council's going to have a. As you know, the council's going to have a strategic planning session later on this week. You know, we do recommend that any kind of, we have accumulated fund balance, so we do recommend, you know, we do one-time or non-recurring expenditures, strategic uses of the fund balance, and we continue to monitor, you know, as we update this forecast as part of the budget process. Once again, the key takeaways are that sales tax is projected to be slowing down. So we are projecting a slower growth for the current fiscal year as well as next. Excluding the ARPA monies, the general fund is projected to have a positive operating margin for the current and the next fiscal year. And then for the five-year forecast, we're projected to maintain the required fund balance, if you will, and again, recommending very strategic, one-time or non-routine expenditures as part of this upcoming budget development process. As our recommendations, we're recommending for the council to receive this mid-year fiscal year '23 report as well as adopt a resolution approving the updated position control list, adding the permit technician position. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Harjo. I'm just going to start with framing this. This is, this report, right, is here so that we can see where we stand midpoint during the year, kind of doing this for the benefit of the public too, where we stand halfway through the fiscal year with respect to our revenues and expenses. And where we, it looks like we might fall short in sales tax and then other things, but that's what this is. So we're just receiving this report. This is not something for action. With the exception of the addition of this one position, right? There is one position that staff is proposing to add, the permit technician, and that requires adoption of a resolution by the city council in order to add that position to the position control list.
That's correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to, for those in the public who maybe are wondering, what is all this about? Okay, any other, any questions from council members? Councilmember Marks?
Okay, were you going to go over the position control list at all or no? Because I have one question. I'm concerned that the economic development manager position has a zero for '23. I thought we were interviewing.
Sure, yeah, I can definitely speak to that. We typically don't go over the position control. We highlight all the changes that are recommended. As it relates to the economic development manager position, the council did authorize the position to be filled out at economic development manager. However, when we go out to recruit and fill the positions, if we feel through the interview process, the candidate or the incumbent is not ready to be, for the position to be filled at a manager level, the positions get filled at, underfilled, if you will. So in this case, the prior incumbent was, that was hired or was in this position, was underfilled, so the position was filled at a analyst level with the thought process at some point in the future as the incumbent gains more experience in professional development that they could be reclassed to what was authorized as a manager position. Similar to what happens in, say, our public safety, we could do a firefighter position. We're interviewing. If we're going to bring in somebody from the academy, technically, they come in as a trainee, and once they pass the academy, then they actually officially get put into that position, if you will.
Okay, I'm sure the public understood all that because I know I'm a little confused. So bottom line is, are we going to have an economic development person? Jimmy, if you could please help, yeah, because I think we all have the question, yeah.
The position control list that you're looking at is a snapshot of what we currently have. And we just recently had a vacancy of a management analyst who was the economic development person. So that's the snapshot. We are right now in recruitment. We expect to interview for an economic development manager. And if we fill that position at a manager level, when we come back to get you to adopt the budget, you'll see the one move from the analyst to the manager.
Okay, all right, good, all right. Okay, I can't see councilmembers asking to speak, so you're going to have to get my attention, I'm sorry.
I do see Councilmember Hilton's name on the speaker list.
Okay, I can't see it. So Councilmember Hilton?
I think it's under speakers on that little top actions, motions, votes, speakers. Harjo, thank you for the presentation. This is probably not coming to your surprise, I usually bring this up. The dispatcher's need assessment from 2016 stated a minimum dispatcher staffing of 3%. The fire department standards of coverage from 2019 showed the need for a dedicated fire dispatcher, whether that's through training for a dual role or contract with the county. My question is, does staff still feel that we have inadequate public safety dispatcher coverage with increased calls for service and need for both police and fire? And can we handle a police officer or firefighter down and at the same time, the regular calls of service when the system is stressed?
Who? I don't know if anybody needs to, yeah, that's not what's on our agenda, but I'll leave it to Jimmy to...
Well, I'll have Chief Wyatt answer that question, but I will point out that we, I've never, in the seven years I've been with you, I've seen a study that didn't say we needed staffing in every study we have. So I think if I could help with the question a bit, I'd ask Chief Wyatt to answer your questions about what happens when we have shortages. What are we doing to try to ensure that we're recruiting and retaining dispatchers? And really any other position, because we don't have a, we don't have a higher turnover or a higher vacancy rate in dispatchers than we do in any other way, any other position. So we're always forced to triage or to adjust what we're doing to make sure that the day-to-day work gets done. But I'll let Chief Wyatt answer that, and I can also have our HR director, Leanne, jump into if she could add anything.
So I'll just say that under normal conditions, our dispatchers, and there's typically two, that answer the calls and do the dispatching for both police and fire, are able to handle the call volume. However, when we see on some incidents where the weather gets worse or where we have a greater need for a particular day, yes, the dispatchers can get overwhelmed. It is a, an issue that, from the fire department's perspective, we have dispatchers who are not specifically trained for fire dispatching, although they do get some training to our protocols. The ideal candidate for dispatching for the fire service in particular is one who's been trained on handling multiple alarms, being able to handle a sudden call out of, or call for resources. And right now, our current dispatching doesn't have that specialized training. I'm not sure if I'm answering the questions in particular, but I'm trying to give you an overview.
Yes, thank you.
Just to give you, I'm sorry, just one more point, just to give you a point of, when the study was done in 2016, we've had a 40% increase in call volume. So it's obvious that as the city continues to grow, that there is a need, just like I say over and over again, for fire service in general, for the service, the ability of the, of our resources to meet the service that's needed.
You're saying fire service, but you mean medical call service, right? That's the increase.
No, it's actually, we had a 40% increase in fire and EMS. So it's been, it's been across the board.
Okay, thank you. Do you want Leanne to say anything or? Okay. Okay, I see no other councilmembers wanting to speak. I'm going to open the public comment.
I have no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. So again, council, this is to receive the mid-year report update. The only action item is approving the one position, the permit technician. So...
Motion to accept.
Second.
To accept the report and separately for adopt the resolution? Okay, is the motion also to adopt the resolution updating for the one position?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Armadara, seconded by Councilmember Tovar.
I have a discussion, a friendly amendment too, that I'd like to bring up. So I'm still concerned about the, you know, going back to the budget, about the increased overtime and the mental health and stress that puts on the fire department. You know, last year during the mid-year, in March, they were at 66% of budget, and that was due to overtime and staffing. Last September, we added $500,000 to soften that. So this March, they're at 52%. I still, I still think we haven't solved the root cause of those vacancies that are there. So my friendly amendment would be, and this is obviously, if you guys would agree to it, it would be a request to Jimmy, and if you want to do this separate from this, that's fine. But I've been getting emails, I don't know if the rest of you are getting emails, from residents that live in the Santa Teresa Fire District. And they're saying that sometimes they feel like they're not getting the coverage that we've been, that we've promised them, along with good response times. And I don't have an answer back to them, whether that's true or not. It's how someone feels. I'd like to see a report back on the average response times into that district, along with the number of days that the 12-hour Santa Teresa unit has been in service since it's been implemented. And if I can offer any clarity to that, let me know. But I think it's a report that could be brought back just on council correspondence in the future, but it's something that's being requested, and I do not know how to answer it.
Does it need to be part of the motion, Jimmy?
I think it belongs as a future agenda item request, because that's not what is, that is not what this agenda item is. And when we look at staffing, we look at staffing for all departments, not just fire. So it certainly is something to address at the strategic planning meeting, but it is not part of this agenda item, which is simply a report on the mid-year budget, which is something we've already approved.
I really agree that we have to push at the strategic plan meeting because Friday's fire was in the Santa Teresa area and it was closed. So we have to do something about it because as our population is growing, our coverage of service is not. And we have to do something.
Yes, and as you know, that's a big report that we did a few years ago, so that's why I say that's not just a little thing.
It needs to be updated, and Saturday we need to push it.
Yeah, with response times and everything that comes to us.
And then, well, and it goes back to the staffing. We were talking about the position control, we're getting a mid-year budget update. You know, but one of the reasons why we're not seeing the fires budget at 66% because they have no staffing and they're mandating at all their ranks is because we just added $500,000 to the budget in September. So it doesn't look as bad. But I'm telling you, if you talk to them, and even with the police officers, if you talk to them right now, staffing levels, it's, even though we put in recruitment and retention into the MOU, it's not working.
Not disciplined.
There is some, you know, I still believe that there is a problem in there. So that's why I believe that this is tied back. It's a simple request. I don't want to have to wait two weeks for it. If the majority of the council agrees, I think it's something super small that can just be added in there. It could be a direction to staff to come back. It's not any normal stats that would come in other, but it, to me, it ties directly back to this budget and why we're spending so much money on overtime.
I agree, councilmember. I think that it merits, you know, the staff time and us discussing it. So I'll accept that friendly amendment if the motioner will, as well, the second motion.
So as a friendly amendment, it would have to be accepted by the person who made the motion and the person who seconded it.
Yeah, we both have. They did. So we are being asked to vote on something that is not on our agenda. Is that it? I don't understand.
Well, we're being asked to vote on, you're being asked to vote on something that is on the agenda with a modification to bring back a report on something. It doesn't change the actual position.
The resolution, is adopting a resolution?
The resolution is being adopted, as I understand the motion, as is. The first item, receive the report, would be receive the report with a certain direction to staff.
I would like to, if it's okay, Mayor, I'd like to make an attempt to try to simplify this. So it's obviously a conversation you don't want to have. We can come on Saturday during your strategic planning and give you a verbal report about the response times in the Santa Teresa area, because we're going to be talking about strategic planning and priorities and what's going on out there because we have had money funded for a fire station. We haven't been able to build the permits. So we're going to talk about that anyway, and then if there's an action item from that strategic planning, then we can dig deeper. But I'd like to have the initial conversation to address some of the questions that Councilmember Hilton brought up, like what's going on with response times out there? Why is this happening this way? And I think we could help on Saturday with just the cursory conversation and see where that goes.
Thank you. That was a good conversation to have.
The amendment is officially un...
Okay.
Thank you.
We're not friends.
Okay, so now it's to receive the budget update and to adopt the resolution with nothing else to it. Okay, so is this a roll call vote? Yes. Oh, no, yes.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Now, is this to add the position too?
Yes, this includes adding that one position.
Can I speak?
Oh, sure.
Okay, because I don't support adding a position right now. There's layoffs going on everywhere and I, and we just got a report on our budget. We're not going to be coming in with the money we thought we would. So I don't believe we should be hiring right now, just to have to lay off in another couple of months. Thank you.
I think that staff, though, said that, well, we saw how much money business licenses generate. And if we don't have a staff person to help move those along in an efficient way, then we're shooting, like we're cutting off our nose to smite our face, like...
It also says they do 10 a day. They have two people, that's five a day.
If I could just add a little clarification to that. The position, one, for the forecast that you saw, we, as indicated in the report, is reflected. So that expense is reflected in the forecast from an ongoing perspective. So what you see in the forecast does reflect that. That's one. The second is, this position primarily because development services charges fees, user fees, which we updated. So the position essentially would be funded by user fees, which are recouped over the counter. So...
Great.
Just wanted to add that clarification.
Thank you. Okay, so again, everybody is entitled to their opinion and their vote for whatever their own reasons. So go ahead and, everybody should be voting.
Councilmember Armadara?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. So that passed six to one, I believe. Okay. Brings us to 11.3, which is a resolution declaring the Cherry Blossom Apartments as surplus pursuant to Government Code Section 54221. And Bryce is going to be giving us this report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So tonight, this agenda item, as the mayor mentioned, is the declaring of the Cherry Blossom Apartments as surplus. Just some background information, so the Cherry Blossom Apartments are a property that is owned by the city. It's on Monterey Road, consisting of seven affordable residential apartments as well as three ground floor commercial units. Previously, the county several years ago expressed interest in purchasing the property from the city, but never completed a transaction for us. The site isn't a desirable location for developers. We have received an offer but have not pursued it because SLA or the Surplus Lands Act process has to be done before we can engage in that negotiation process. So in determining the final disposition of the property, the city does have some set interests that it has in this property. First, we are interested in selling and transitioning that property and its maintenance and management to others in order to basically do a better job than we do as far as property management. It's not a primary function the city has. We're also looking to retain the affordability units for the community and also the economic development benefits of that property. So it's in a downtown location, so we're interested obviously in many aesthetic improvements, maximizing the benefit of the commercial units that are on the ground floor. And of course, any improvement to that building is going to be an improvement and benefit to the neighboring properties as well. So the Surplus Lands Act is a process that council is very familiar with, but some of our members of the public may not be, which is a process that has to happen before engaging with any properties on sale or lease that are city-owned. It requires a notice of availability for a period of 60 days. This is sent out to housing organizations that are registered with the Housing and Community Development Department of the State of California. Anybody that submits a letter of interest then has a 90-day negotiation window that the city has to negotiate in good faith with. Once the process completes, then the state has a 30-day window to complete the review and to give us a clearance letter that we have complied with the Surplus Lands Act. One key thing is that we are not required to change the zoning or land use of a property that's going through that process, which we have at this point no interest in changing for its mixed-use purpose at this point in time. This is a process that will come to council in the future, future related items. As we're looking at all of the city's properties and assets, and for any property lease or sale before entering those negotiations, we'll have to bring the item, the property, up to surplus for the council. So staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution declaring the Cherry Blossom Apartments property to be surplus and direct staff to proceed with the Surplus Lands Act process. That completes the presentation. I'd be interested in questions.
Thank you. All right. Councilmembers, does anyone have any questions for Bryce? Seeing none, I'd like to open public comment.
I have no speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
All right, closing public comment.
Mayor, I would like to move for approval.
Okay, so that's a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay, that motion was made by Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Armadara. And it's a roll call vote, correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Armadara?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, and that passes unanimously. All right, brings us to 11.4, Jump Start Downtown. Approve the Downtown Building and Planning Fee Reduction Policy and the Downtown Facade and Blight Removal Program and amend the fiscal year 2023 operation budget by $100,000 in the general fund. Bryce, take it away.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is the, followed from October 17th, final report of the Downtown Committee and the adoption of the nine recommendations by council. Tonight, we're asking for council approval on two of those recommendations. As mentioned, the facade improvement and blight removal program, as well as the building and planning fee reduction policy. Both programs use previous council-approved programs as a model from prior years, but modified to meet the current recommendations. So the first recommendation is the Downtown Facade Improvement and Blight Removal Program. It's a one-year program, beginning February 1st, 2023, and going through January 31st, 24. The program proposes a $5,000 maximum reimbursement grant for facade improvements. A key word being on reimbursement, we'll talk about that here in a moment. This is a dollar-for-dollar match up to the program. So if the 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 work is, ends up being less than $5,000, it's a 50-50 split. The 5,5,000 is the cap, so anything above that is entirely on the applicant. There is a difference in this year's program, or the program that's being proposed tonight, is that there's an additional up to $5,000 to address vacant blighted properties for a total of $10,000 if approved. The application would be required to be completed, and contract would be required to be entered between the city and the applicant detailing the terms and conditions to ensure both performance and to protect the city. As part of that, the recommendation was to fund $100,000, as recommended funding, on a first-come, first-served basis. And this was not contemplated when the, when the city adopted the budget. So we're asking for amendment to appropriate $100,000 from the general fund for those reimbursements as requested. We want to include some pictures from the previous programs to give you an idea of some of the work that's been done in the past. So this is the Realty Society. They participated in the program in the 1920 fiscal year. The, before our pictures on the left and the after on the right. And additionally, we also had 7537 Monterey also participated in the program as well and did some facade improvements for that property as well. The second program is the is the Building and Planning Fee Reduction Policy for Downtown. This program is a two-year program, February 1st, 2023, through January 2025. It's a 50% rebate up to $5,000 of maximum reimbursement. Certain conditions must be met. The property must be on Monterey between First and 10th Streets, only for permits issued between those dates, February 1st, 23, and January 31st, 25. The work must be completed before the permit expires. There will be no extensions in order to qualify for the reimbursement. If they have to get an extension, they lose the reimbursement allowance. This has been, this was recommended by the Downtown Committee to encourage time and completion of the work and make sure that the improvements are done promptly. There are two exemptions that were included. This is state mandated fees and the appeal applications. Those are excluded from the rebate program. Based on past year permits, the fiscal impact would be approximately $50,000 per year of revenue being rebated from the Community Development Department. Ultimately, the final amount depends on the actual permits that are pulled, the number and the value of those. So both programs are, incentives are reimbursement-based. So there's no upfront payment from the city, only with verified payments being made by the applicant, or the 40, I should say, and meeting the funding agreement terms that are included in the contract. Additionally, any project benefiting from these programs that total over $15,000 would trigger prevailing wages. So most projects in the facade improvement blight removal program are unlikely to hit that amount. The building projects for the permit fee reductions may reach that amount. Again, applicants will be informed both on the application, as well as when they submit. And we do that application review, we'll make sure they're aware that there is a chance that they may have to pay prevailing wage. So staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the Downtown Building and Planning Fee Reduction Policy, approve the Downtown Facade Improvement and Blight Removal Program, and adopt a resolution amending the 23 budget by $100,000 in the general fund. That completes the presentation and happy to address any questions.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Tovar, does that mean you have a question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Bryson, thank you for this report. You know, obviously, I was part of the ad hoc committee, you know. But sort of looking at everything, and I want to, I want to sort of go back in time here a little bit. The last program we had like this, it was, it was budgeted right around the same amount, correct? Do you recall what that amount was?
It was less.
Yeah, the facade program, I believe, was $50,000 was the max. And it was only 5,000, we didn't have the extra 5,000 for blight.
And the reason why I bring that up, and obviously, all of us have talked to many downtown businesses, you know, and my concern, if you look at, and again, thank you for those photos you showed, but if you look at what we did last time, and sort of the improvement that happened with that small amount, from what I keep hearing, there wasn't much of a change, right, for our downtown. I mean, that's why we're here today to discuss this again. And and so for me, I mean, looking at, obviously, and, you know, we hear about the recession, we talked about all of that, but I think, for me, I think we need to be more proactive in what we do to help our business succeed. And I don't know if $100,000 is enough, because my understanding is that a business cannot apply for all three, for a total of up to $15,000, correct? They're not, that's not what I read in here. So I could be a business that needs help with all three of those categories, but I would be ineligible for that, right?
It depends on the property specifically. So the, the, the facade improvement program is 5,000. If the property is vacant and has issues that are for blight. So, for example, and the policy identifies things such as plywood removal, replacing broken windows, refuse weed removal, you know, attractive window treatments. Those type of items would allow them to get the extra $5,000, assuming they applied for it. So an individual application could get the full 10,000 under the blight removal and facade program.
Yeah, but I'm looking at the total 15,000. Could I be a business that needs a permit, blight, and?
So the the permit, the permit and the building and planning fee reduction is for any property in that area. So it is a separate program, so they could qualify under both.
Right, but I'm talking about all three, because right now, the the maximum is 10,000. But if I'm a business that needs assistance with all three of those phases, we're saying, no, that's not, you're not eligible, you're not allowed to do that.
They actually can qualify for all three.
So what I'm hearing is, I could apply for up to $15,000.
Yes, assuming that, again, that all the terms and conditions of the agreement are met, that's a vacant property, and that they use all the money appropriately with the project. The caution that we would give the property owners, obviously, it's $15,000 grant, the project is going to exceed the $15,000 limit on prevailing wage. That project would trigger prevailing wage for the builder.
And thanks for the clarification, because that's not what I read in the report. The report says up to $10,000. But you're saying I can apply for up to $15,000?
Correct, it's, it's, but it's not an application for the 15,000. So there's an application process for the, for the 10,000, up to 10,000. The, the permit fee is, if you're a property that's within that and you accept it, you can have those, those fees, the reduced rate as a rebate. But again, the key thing is a rebate, and there's just conditions that a permit has to be completed.
No, and I thank you for that clarification, because again, I think we need to be careful how we word it in here, because from what I talk to businesses, they don't read it that way. And I think we need to be clear and precise, so we can go out as, as councilmembers saying, yes, you are eligible for up to $15,000.
We can work on that outreach.
The other question I have, in here, this excludes nonprofits, is that correct? No?
I don't think so. I don't, I don't believe including it, but I can take a look back just to make sure.
Because I just want to make sure, like, like the Gardner Health Clinic, which is nonprofit, is it saying that, are they eligible for this type of program if they wanted to apply?
As long as they're in the location, they should be.
Just as business, it doesn't say no nonprofit.
Yeah, the only ineligible ones, it's more functions, so property acquisition, working capital. It's more limited based on the type of function. And now the property, yeah, that's what you're saying, the property owned by the nonprofit, correct, has been excluded. If council wishes to include that, that is something that we can make a change, right, to diastate that.
Yeah, and what page was that, sorry, yeah.
Sorry, that is on page, it says 87 of 106.
Yeah, yeah. So I would ask that we, that we would allow, like you said, we would not exclude an organization or business that's considered nonprofit to be excluded from this, if they wanted to apply for it. I guess that's my request for the council.
Are they exempt from other state fees that would?
The, the primary reason why nonprofits were not included is because they do not inherit sales tax. And the key is we're making sales tax investments
from businesses that contribute to the city's sales tax revenues.
So that's why they were excluded.
Right, no, and I, and I understand that it's a legitimate reason, but again, if, you know, we're looking at our downtown improvement, I mean, we should allow business. Again, I, I haven't talked to them, I'm just, from reading the report, why would we exclude a business under this condition?
Well, the other thing to, if I may, because I know you're ready to speak, is that this is a maximum of $100,000, no matter how you look at it. So that doesn't go that far. If you're going to have one entity get 15, there aren't very many others that are going to fit into that. So it's just something to realize that, you know, it is what it is, but it's $100,000 total is what we're going to be voting on to put into the general fund.
No, no, and I, and I understand.
Why it's a jump start, right, is to incentivize folks who, who need it, not to completely subsidize other folks who don't need it.
And we're trying to get sales tax generated from these businesses. If the nonprofits don't pay sales tax, then we are maybe not hitting another businessman that would be paying sales tax. So I don't think I would support that.
No, I'm just asking.
Okay, Councilmember Hilton?
So to jump on the nonprofit side, that, I, I agree with what you're saying in theory, but if we come back to it, we have a small amount of money and we're trying to target a return on investment for us, right, the people, so we can pay police, pay fire, and all that kind of stuff. So I, I get that, and I know you understand that now, too, but, yeah, I wouldn't want to include a nonprofit that's doing good work in our, our community. My question, Bryce, and thank you for putting this together, is what, what is the city's plan to reach those that are not well-connected in the community that could benefit from this? It maybe don't have the funds to match it, maybe there's other ways, or, I don't know, maybe there's other loans or something they can do, because they have to dollar-for-dollar match it. They might not have five grand just sitting in the cash drawer ready for this. And what are we doing for people that don't speak English as their primary language?
Yeah, so, so the lesson was learned on the, on the survey as far as the outreach side of it. So the application, instead of just being online, as was done in the past years, it'll be paper, copy, it'll be distributed to our partners as well. And we'll try to reach out to those organizations that serve the Spanish-speaking community, especially the business community, and then try to, we can also work with our partners to connect them through SB, you know, SBAs, SBTCs, other organizations that do provide lending to others to connect them. Again, we, we would definitely make sure to, you know, put in the caveats that we, you know, we're not advocating for that, for funding applications, we have to keep distance from that, we can connect them with some resources.
Yeah, I can see, you're using us as to be the advocates. So will this be translated into Spanish? So I could, I could go in and drop it off to someone that doesn't speak English, and they would be able to get worked through that?
Yes.
And on the same side, if they had questions, there'd be someone on staff that could help them?
Yeah, so we have a, we have a list of those that are certified for bilingual that we can call in any meeting to help make sure that the information is communicated effectively for them.
Thank you.
Bryce, I have a question. Along the lines of making sure that everybody has the same opportunity to apply, equal opportunity, and is is made aware. How, we, you know, we have circumstances, we have some circumstances in our downtown where the same person, individual, or company owns multiple addresses, right? In the same, in this first to 10th Street area that you're talking. How, this 5,000 max, for example, just take one of them, where it's a $5,000 max, how is that limited to the same property owner? Like, what if one owner, one, one person, or, or if they're in, in an LLC, whatever it is, but the same applicant owns, say, six different addresses downtown? Can that person apply for $5,000 per address and take 30% of this $100,000?
I don't believe so, let me, for.
That's why I'm asking, is what's the, the 5,000 is per what?
Contributed by the property owner or tenant. So it says amount for each individual business for application. So conceptually, by the, by the, the type of grant they could, if they had different businesses. Let's say the same owner had multiple LLCs, they could qualify as multiple in this one.
And they could take 30% then, in my example, there, to the same party?
Correct, they could. We can, obviously, if, if council wishes to change that, we can make that available.
Yeah, well, that, that, that is what I'm calling to council's attention, because that did happen last time. At the 50,000, it was a, a majority of it went to the same, beneficiary is not the term, because that's, but, you know, it's just something to be aware of, because we do have some properties downtown that are, multiple properties owned by the same person, individual, or company. And, and, you know, if that person is applying right away and applies for six at the same time, that's just consumed, that's at the expense of others who maybe just weren't that fast.
So how, how can we solve that? What, what's your suggestion?
That it be somehow limited per, not just per address, but per applicant, that we look at both.
And then give it like a certain amount of time, so if nobody else does it in like seven or eight months, then you're like, okay, we'll, we'll release the rest of it.
Yeah, well, it can't be that long.
Could we, I mean, because I'm, I'm wondering if somebody has a number of buildings and they're all blighted, they're all, you know, not appealing to look at, could we ask there to be like a scoring as to which building needs it most? If we have more applicants than we have money?
I just think we have, it's not enough money to anyone to do that. And, and, I mean, some of these owners have owned their buildings for a long, long time and have participated in this kind of assistance multiple times, and there are still not tenants in there. So, yeah.
Mayor, I would say one thing to consider, too, is that the greatest benefit we get in a lot of these instances are those who are ready to go, but are missing that last step. And that's really the definition of the jump start. So if you have an individual who has everything ready to go, and they just can't find the $5,000 or $10,000 in there, and they're, they're ready to go, then those are the folks that I think we're, we'll target, because then we know, they'll get it done faster.
So how do we target that? I mean, how do we make it so that the money remains for that?
So we limit it to two?
Yep, whatever, you know, however council wants to split the money, I, I do understand that we could limit it a certain amount of months before you can apply again. So if we did three months or six months before you're able to apply, so other people still have a chance to maybe get to that jump start.
Right.
We could certainly put in a provision like that. I'd say three months.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, and I'm glad we're having this discussion, because again, I, I think having something's better than nothing. But I honestly feel that the funding amount that we, that we were, we're setting here is, is not enough. You know, and Bryson, maybe, you know better than everybody, I mean, when you look at inflation, the cost of, you know, everything that's happening now, when you look at signs, paint, whatever it may be, fixtures, windows, windows, I mean, what it was a year ago and what it is today is two, three times different, right? So that's where my concern with this amount is really not going to make a difference. You know, so, you know, again, and hearing what the mayor and other council's members are saying is, another way is, let's increase the amount. You know, instead of 100,000, why don't we double it, so we'll give every business an opportunity to apply, to get the funding, to make an impact in our downtown? And again, you know, I think 100,000 is, is a great start, but I don't want to be back here a year from now saying, you know, we should, we need more, we need to do more. So I guess that's my question to the council, is, is 100,000 enough to help every business downtown that wants to take advantage of it?
Okay, so 100,000 is what we all approve. That's not really, that is not what we're supposed to be discussing. That's a different thing, and that, you could bring that up at strategic planning if you want to. But we, 100,000 is what we all approve, that's what came out of the ad hoc committee, right? That we were going to do for this program, and so we've already been.
And nothing keeps us from revisiting it after we look at the metrics next year. Nothing would keep us from re-upping that amount.
No, and I'm, and I'm fine, I just want to make, put that in here.
I don't think you're fine with that.
I'm not, I am not, but.
So how, how are we going to word the, the application thing? What's the situation?
I think Jimmy had a good way of doing it.
We could do, say, you know, applications through the first three months, you basically one crack at, one crack for, one application approved, and then after three months, depending on how the, the programs perform, then the second applications could be considered. Also looking at suggesting that, do we say the same business name or principal ownership?
Maximum of two?
As far as figuring that out.
Of two grants?
With enough time in between, like you said, right, so that it can't all get consumed by a single party, or a significant portion cannot get consumed by a single party.
So from what Councilmember Armendaris said, just two grants, so I would not be eligible to apply for all three? Is that what I'm hearing? Because that's what I heard.
No, two of each.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Two times.
Two times, got it.
Okay, so then, with that, we could do, we, there are three things to take action on. Okay, so then, with that, we could do, there are three things to take action on, we could do the first two in one motion.
Mayor, do I get to talk?
Oh, I'm sorry, I still don't see, I'm right there.
I know, I forgot.
Councilmember Marks.
Because now I'm going to make another suggestion here. Jimmy spoke to the GDVA and asked them to give suggestions, remember? No, he doesn't. Well, that, at least that's what I was-
I do remember, but that's for a different program.
It's not part of this?
No.
The lights, the lighting?
No.
Oh, all right, well then, I'll need to bring it up. For sure, we think it, they're talking about the lighting.
The other program that you're thinking of is when we, the council agreed to do 100,000 in investments in downtown in general, and so then I reached out to the GDVA-
That's not what this is.
No. I reached out to the GDVA and asked them for their ideas, so we can prioritize some of the things.
So then technically, they're getting 200,000?
Well, the city's investing the 100,000 in general, downtown improvements, this program is another 100,000 in.
Oh, very nice, all right.
In the facade and blighted program.
Okay, well, thank you. Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Sorry, I mean, it sounds like we're about to vote here, right? Is that what we're about to do?
Wait, wait, Fred.
No, I said, we're about to vote on these three.
No, well, I was going to ask for a motion, we don't even have a motion.
Our public comment.
Oh, I need to go to public comment.
Yeah, and then I'll, yeah, I'll vote for public comment.
Okay, let's go to public comment, because I see at least two people.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have two speakers, that's Ron Kirkish and Terrence Bugazi.
Okay. Good evening.
Okay, I think this is a good idea, you know, I think Mr. Tovar's suggestion of increasing it maybe in the future would be a good idea too. When we talk about blight, I think in a previous meeting, it was brought up that we have a business downtown that has, for whatever reason, has been ported up with plywood. The previous owner had a beautiful front and access to, from Monterey, but for some reason, the current owner has decided to board it up and put plywood up there. Talk about blight, that's not a very good thing for our downtown. I would like to think that we could talk to that owner, the city could talk to that owner and say, you have this opportunity, and if you decide not to take care of it, then we, there will be ramifications of some sort. So I think this, again, I think this is a good thing, but being that it's available, those people who have a problem and refuse to take care of it and take advantage of this should be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Evening, council, Madam Mayor, I think something like this downtown, which I don't partake enough in downtown, but I do have a lot of opinion why I don't, and this is a really important topic to me. The first thing I think is goals, what's the goal? We want to have more businesses that are looking good and making people want to feel welcome downtown. And so if that's your goal, then you should prioritize which businesses those are, not let them just kind of come in as they come in, right? It's not about equity, I don't think, Mayor, it's about how many of those businesses are in bad shape, and if six of them happen to be owned by the same guy, well then, I think it's okay that that particular person gets six times the funds, because the goal is to improve all of those, you know, particular units, whatever they happen to be. So from my perspective, with something like this, there should be some recommendation list, or some prioritization list through some committee or some other thing that says, look, we've got these eight, these eight units that are horrible, those are the people that we need to target, this is how we're gonna take this money and target those to improve those and get the best response we can out of downtown, as opposed to just, whatever happens to come in, we'll see what happens to come in. Second thing is, there has to be standards by which people do things, so that it's not just money that gets spent, it gets spent toward the goal of making a uniform and beautiful downtown that everybody wants to come to. So, not with this necessarily, but somehow in this big picture of downtown, we have to have a CCNR type of situation where people have to abide by things, and if they do have plywood up there, it's gonna come down and you're gonna get fined. If you have graffiti on the front of your place and you're notified of it, you have to paint it over within X days, or you're gonna get fined. And these are the things that we have to do, and if we're gonna spend money, we need to spend it in the exact places that we need to, because we don't have enough money to just hand it out and hope that somebody spends five grand on putting new carpet out in the front, or whatever it may be. So anyway, my opinion is, let's think really hard how we're giving out the money, and that it goes to just the right places to make the best downtown we can.
Thank you. Okay, no other public comment?
Actually, we have two more, that will be Marty Estrada, followed by Tim Cassidy.
Okay.
Yes, I agree with the premise of improving blight removal program downtown, but the problem that I see is that, number one, 100,000 is not a whole lot of money for these folks that are business-owned, that they're trying to do their best to bring in customers. I think the second problem we have is that if you've been downtown, every other stall is now a bar, which is really going down. We have a bar, and every other slot, every other spot, or every other two-spot, a bar. Families don't even take their kids downtown. And then there's a lighting problem, if you go there at night, it's really, it's really not that bright, it's really not that nice. My friend that lives up on the hill says, hey, a lot of families, affluent families from Georgia don't even spend time downtown, they don't even go there, they go to Santana Road, where it's beautiful and nice, where it's more family-oriented. But here, we have a downtown that's lacking all those things, and who wants to take children, small children downtown at night? I mean, even if you go to a family restaurant, if you go to Morgan Hill, look what they've done, their downtown is beautiful, you see families walking down the street, you see all kinds of families, and it's really nice, you see coffee shops open, you see ice cream shops open, but when I go downtown, I look at that at night and I says, whoa, this is a scary place. So I think there's a little bit more that we need to work on in terms of improvement in blight. Number one, why are we having bars all over the place downtown? That's gonna cause people to drink and drive. And then secondly, we need to put a little bit more money towards the issues of that blight. If a store owner boards it up, maybe he doesn't want his windows broken, maybe there's some other issues going on there. But I think there's other ways we can make the downtown really beautiful, but how long has it been like that? I've noticed downtown's been like that forever, it's been the same way. So really, think about, folks, you guys want to have a beautiful downtown? Think about some creative ways that you can bring in some folks to make it really presentable. I know these buildings are old, and they're structured that way, going way back, but there's ways to make it nice, and one of the things you can make nice by inviting businesses that provide, family-oriented businesses, a nice restaurant for kids, a nice restaurant for families. Why are we having bars? Why are we giving permits to bars? That's what I don't understand. You want a nightclub downtown, is that what you want to call it? Let's put an neon sign out there that says nightclub, because that's what it looks like to me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Tim Cassidy.
Actually, still the words ran out of my mouth, actually, I pretty much agree exactly with what you said. I think in just doing that, the sort of creative ways we could do that is, again, visit the other sites that we love along the peninsula, Palo Alto, Morgan Hill, we go on and on and on, all these great little small towns, La Cada, I come from La Cada, I think actually La Cada though is kind of skewed the wrong way. When I was a kid, La Cada was a great little small town community, I think it's gone the wrong way, it's gone too well, I mean, it's made some wrong decisions, but anyway, the point is, Gilroy is a gem, I think we have a lot of potential here, we can do some great things. I think it just, it will literally actually focus on the daytime, so bringing the young families and the kids and stuff during the daytime, and then that will convert into the things, the decisions we make at night. I do agree, actually, I disagree a little bit, bars are important, I actually met the guy, I can't remember his name today, at the library, the guy, the beer guy, he's a great guy, and he's encouraging beer culture, and beer culture and beer consumption is a different thing, it's not a crazy loud, you know, clubs and craziness and all kinds of night things, a beer thing, culture is a day thing, and it's the weekend, it brings in bikers, you know, and it has a culture to it, and there's also kind of a culture to it, and it bonds people, and I know it's growing, so the brewery culture is growing, I think we're on the right track, it's just, I just think that we need little tweaks, and actually, sometimes it's just, it comes down to just simple stupid things like lighting, you know, just some Christmas lights, and then it starts with that and it grows, changing some planters, I'm a landscaper, I'd love to be involved with little small projects, things like that, so again, it just starts with little small things, little tiny things, planting a tree and seeing a little blight and having a suggestion in box and somebody, you know, saying, hey, I hate this corner, it's ugly, and, you know, we need to do this, and I do things on my own that people don't even ever know, I mean, I clean up corners, since I'm a landscaper, there's things that are on videotape that people know, and all over this town, I've been on videotape doing cleaning up places, and so it's about doing things that people don't know about and not taking credit for it, and then it's also about making suggestions, so, anyway, it's simple things that start, and then it's also about, you know, suggestions and just doing the right thing.
Thank you. Okay, closing public comment, yes?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment, Councilmember Tovar, are you still?
Well, I would like to make a motion, obviously, for approval, but just want to make sure that, as discussed with Bryce, that the language is clear and precise in regards to, you know, that every business that applies would be eligible for all three of these if needed. So, I just want to make sure that's clear.
To interject for just one moment, we were suggesting that on the motions, when we get to the, that the last item be done separately, that's the adopt a resolution meant in the year of the budget, but that be a separate motion, the other several items that are mentioned should all be done in one motion, with appropriate wordings as necessary.
Okay, so Councilmember Tovar has made a motion to adopt a resolution approving the downtown building and planning fee reduction policy, and to approve the downtown facade and blight removal program, subject to, Jimmy, do you want to try that? Okay, and then we'll see if we get a second. Okay.
Thank you. Staff will incorporate language that includes that no one may apply for subsequent or consecutive grants until 90 days have passed, and that they only are allowed to apply two times and up to the $15,000, which is including of the three programs that we discussed. That's what I understand.
Okay.
I'll second that.
You already said, okay, so the motion is made by Councilmember Tovar, then it's seconded by Councilmember Marks, and do you need a roll call on?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll do the roll call.
Sorry, I do have a friendly amendment, if possible.
To your own motion? It's your own motion?
I know, but, so, and again, I'm glad we're having this discussion, and I appreciate the comments that were made about the importance, I would like to see, on a separate matter, if the council would direct city staff to bring back the agenda item of the downtown standing committee for the next council meeting.
A separate motion.
I suggest that that cannot be amended into this motion, it really is a separate item.
All right, when can I make that?
Before we leave this item, but not in this motion.
Got it, okay.
Okay, so that's a roll call then.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, all right, that passes unanimously, then we need a motion, whatever order, Council member Tovar, but the next motion I'm looking for is the one to adopt a resolution amending our budget, our operating budget, by $100,000 in the general fund.
Correct.
Is someone making that motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Marks made the motion, followed by, seconded by Councilmember Hilton.
Okay, Councilmember Marks made the motion, it's seconded by Councilmember Hilton.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, all right, that's also unanimous. Now, Councilmember Tovar, you have something else?
Yes, thank you, I would like to ask that the council direct staff to bring back the downtown standing committee, downtown standing committee to the next agenda on February 6th for discussion and for vote, in lieu of the discussion we're having right So last Monday, I proposed that we create a standing committee for downtown, and I'm asking the city, or council, if we can direct staff to bring that back at our February 6th agenda for vote.
Okay, so it's a, it was a future agenda item request at our last meeting, and what he's asking right now, if I understand correctly, is that the council vote to bump it to the top of the list, basically, so that it comes back to us on February 6th, at our next council meeting, as opposed to Jimmy determining when things can come back to us based on when future agenda item requests are made.
Correct.
Okay, so do we do that in a formal motion way? Or is it?
It's a direction to staff, but it is a priority thing, so I think it should be voted on.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do, in a roll call?
Do we discuss?
You can just-
No, you don't technically need a roll call, you need a second to the motion, discussion.
So it says there's a second.
Okay.
Rebecca Armandares?
Seconded it.
And she now, and you now want to say something? Okay.
Well, I'd like to hear from Jimmy as to if that would be too burdensome, like just from your perspective and staff's perspective, like, what would that entail? And then also, if we could discuss the urgency of it, or why you want to move it up, Fred.
I would say the burden depends on what is established as part of that committee. Some committees are very autonomous, others require a lot of assistance, so I would suggest that if council does move this to February, we would come back with a very short report, giving you the details of what a committee could look like, and then getting feedback from council if they want to start it, and what their goals are, and what their time is for having this committee, so it really just kind of open book about the direction this committee could go, so it could be very, you know, ministerial, very routine meetings, or it could be very intense, I think it would depend on how the committee's actually developed.
So that's a good question, and if it is something that would take a lot of staff time, would you be, would you let us know what we, if we need to remove something else? Okay, because that's, I don't want to just keep adding to your list without pulling stuff off, when that's what it means.
And again, it depends on the frequencies of meetings, what the agendas are like, what the goals are, so that really, and it will have a point where I will, you know, tell you, if you want to do this, we're probably not going to get to this, because we've got to allocate staff, which is, you know, pretty much Bryce and I at this point.
So then it's safe right now, if we wanted to support this, it's pretty safe, because you're gonna come back with a report that will then tell us if it's not safe, is that what you're saying? Kind of, what do you mean?
Well, committees are developed by council based on their goals.
Right.
And how they want to construct themselves, if, you know, there's three, four, five council members, that's up to the council, but, you know, I would look to Mr. Tovar also like what's his goals in these committees, that might help me understand more about what we're looking at and frame something for you on February 6th.
Okay.
I want to throw something out, just on procedure-wise, there's a lot of future agenda items that, you know, that I talk with staff ahead of time, I talk with some of you, I talk with the public, and there's stuff that got moved to a future agenda, but I never put the pressure like this publicly on staff to come up with like an urgent reason, and I would say that it might behoove any of us that want to get an item on the future agenda, and we're like trying to rush it two meetings in a row, to lay out the reasons why, and maybe have those answers prepared, so when Jimmy just said, well, I don't even know what the parameters are, that that's already set up, and I would, I'm saying that as a colleague too, I would appreciate that from you ahead of time, so that way, why are you trying to rush this so fast? What are the reasons that, you know, that you could let me know? Because there's things that I want to rush in there too, but I'm waiting patiently.
Can I respond to that? So first of all, whatever you decide to put on the agenda, that's on you, it's, don't compare what you try to do to what I'm trying to do here, and I'm not bullying anybody or forcing anybody to move on this, we're talking about the urgency, the priority of our downtown, and here's an opportunity for us to get this committee going and say, you know what, we're gonna have oversight, we're gonna work with our local community, we're gonna work with our downtown businesses, and let's be proactive now, instead of waiting months to get this committee going, because again, if we're starting to move on the recommendations that we made, and we're voting, this standing committee is gonna help us get those things moving quicker and have some oversight, so it's not about putting pressure, I'm just asking, if we're talking about starting to move forward on these improvements, why not have this standing committee in place so we can start having discussions with everybody involved? I mean, let's plan something.
My question is why the urgency, though, Fred, why expedite it to the top of the My question is why the urgency though, Fred, why expedite it to the top of the agenda?
And why can't you just do this on your own, or include some of us to help you out with it, to implement it out there? Why do you need a staff time to do that when we can do it, we can get all the recommendations and we can help you with it? Like outside of here, do you think it's not as powerful as having a standing committee?
I, I don't think it is.
I mean, those are the things I want to hear.
I don't think it is. And again, not to say the city staff's not doing their job, but again, I think we have to have some oversight, start moving on these projects.
Okay, I know, I'm just going to interrupt because it's, we're getting into, yeah, details that we can't really discuss. So it ha, it is, the motion has been seconded, so we have it on the floor, we are going to vote on it. I want to express that, for me, the, the, it's not an urgency thing to me, but the subject matter is something that if you are going to do something with it, you would want to do it towards the beginning of the year. However, because the strategic planning meeting is coming up on Saturday, that is where I would choose to do it and not have a separate thing on our agenda. That, okay, so I, I just want to, to say that much without getting into what this committee would look like or how it would be structured. We can certainly discuss that if there's majority support for it at the strategic planning meeting. Okay, so we need to vote, right?
Well, what are we voting on now?
We're voting on, on-
On his motion.
His motion was to have it come back on February 6th.
All right.
Okay.
And not strategic plan, okay.
So, is it roll called, or are you, are you, are we doing it here?
If the system is available, you can vote digitally there.
Okay.
I need Councilmember Armendaras and Councilmember Klein. Councilmember Armendaras?
Are you roll call voting?
No.
No, it's on the same. Her screen doesn't come up.
Mine's not coming up.
Okay, uh, who would you like to vote?
Uh, yes. Wow, okay.
Thank you.
Coming back. All right, that was for the public, oh, public can see it there. Right. Okay, I'm going to suggest we take just a, is five minutes enough, a five minute break, or do you want to come back at 8:30 to continue? I'm being asked to take a small break, five minutes, okay, 8:25, we will resume.
It didn't work on it. You know, the library bill? Twenty-one years. Two public works. Foul the first. That was done. Still on a bond for that. It'll be paid off. That's our plan. We financed the police station, the corporation, our, when those are paid off, our plan is to go back to the voters. And ask for the money. We can pay. No, no, I know. Twenty-seven, twenty million. You want to add a quadic center? Well, we got to go to the- Everybody we talked to says yes. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. You know, like the Morgan Hill Aquatic Center? That'll be a beautiful. Oh, I can, I can see right off. But the thing is that, if it's a 23-inch for lifer, that's too long. Well, that's, that's we got voted down.
Well, I don't know why we couldn't get it. Yeah.
She thinks we have it.
No, no.
Okay. We like to put on a agenda this weekend, we should talk about it.
I know, I'm asking, you know what, if I, why are you doing?
Put on a agenda. We're going to be talking about it.
I started, I started to, but then we start talking about it.
This late meeting, I wasn't going to snack, look, look, look. Unless you muzzle Fred, we don't chat. You know what I'm noticing? There is no way to, I should ask Ty that quick, or Christine, Christina, how do you, when you're done speaking, how do you click off? Yeah, but how? I did that, and it's not doing it. Nope, see? How do I get that to disappear? I tried everything.
Sometimes it's really truncated. So we're just noticing these because even for the mayor, we weren't able to, she wasn't able to view who was raising their hand. Um, I'll take none of this and hopefully it'll get-
Yeah, see, I tried that, I tried the microphone, I tried double clicking, um, I did that again, I even went up here.
Try refreshing, you can see, that works.
Refreshing is?
Right, the, this little arrow in circle.
Oh, that one. How are you? Are you? All right.
This is where we're at. So you're not on there? But Rebecca's hand is there.
Okay, and then we'll be going to this one next.
Correct, mhm, yeah.
Okay.
And then when he sets the current item, it'll-
It'll come up. All right, great, thank you. I had a refresh. There's everything she told me to do, I'd already tried. Time control the speakers. Well, you know, you should be able to click right there, hit it, then, you know, request to speak, you know, you click that. And then last time, two weeks ago, I was able to, you know, when I was done talking, I was able to click on it, and then I would go away. Today, it froze basically.
You're supposed to click on the same button, is that the idea?
I think on your name, the little hand, but she had me refresh.
Refresh with the little button up here? Little refresh there?
Yes, that was.
Oh, I see, yeah. That's what happened with Marie with the Stafford board. Shouldn't happen.
Sorry, it's asking me to still wait? We're good?
We're good, okay, let's go.
Okay, council members, can we please resume? Okay, calling this meeting back, back to order 8:27 if the time needs to be announced. And we are on agenda item 11.5, which is proposed modifications to Chapter 19B Smoking Pollution Control relating to banning smoking from multifamily developments and public events. And Bryce will be giving us this report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So on October 3rd, a council direction was issued to bring back expanded prohibitions on smoking specifically for inside and outside multifamily housing properties and public events. As staff has been reviewing other municipal ordinances, there's some clarifications that staff is seeking from council to help make sure that the draft ordinance we bring to you on February 6th meets what council's looking for. So we'll go through the four items, and then we'll follow up at the end with a summary slide to get your, to get council direction. So the first item is reasonable distance. As we look through most of the ordinances, they identify a defined reasonable distance to essentially be a buffer zone around smoking prohibited areas. The intent of this is to limit secondhand smoking from drifting into those areas. Different cities use different distances in their ordinances, 20 feet, 25 feet, and 30 feet. We're recommending to council 25 feet, and as we look of the cities that have reasonable distance defined, six of them, the majority of them, are, use that particular distance in their, in their definition for reasonable distance. The second item is for multifamily housing, is designating smoking areas. All the cities in the county who currently prohibit smoking in multifamily housing allow properties to establish designated smoking areas. They don't mandate them, but they do allow the property owners to identify those. When they are included, the common conditions usually require it to be in an unenclosed area, a distance, usually the reasonable distance away from areas used by children for activities such as swimming pools, tennis courts, gyms, et cetera, and other enclosed areas and service areas. And they usually have a defined perimeter marked with signage and have a means to dispose of the smoking waste. The other multifamily housing component, there are nine agencies that prohibit multifamily housing smoking, and they include provisions of that ordinance and mandate it to be in the leases that the, the complex and property management companies use. Seven, though, however, have an additional clause that grants third-party beneficiary status to other tenants to enforce. Basically, that means that allows other tenants to sue other tenants for violations of the smoking, by smoking ordinance. It does not, they are clear to say that it does not allow them to evict for breach of the contract, though. The two that don't, Santa Clara, sorry, Santa Clara County and Montessorano do not have this clause in their, in their ordinance. This can be an option for enforcement without requiring police resources for reports of violation. And then finally, public events, there are a couple of cities that do allow certain designated smoking sections or smoking allowances. Morgan Hill allows for a designated smoking section to be identified for public events. And then Saratoga typically prohibits smoking, but can allow smoking with the, that makes certain conditions, namely that it doesn't advertise that children are 18. Staff, this is the one that staff is not recommending allowance for this, but seeks council confirmation. So on the screen is a table with the four directions requested on the left-hand side, briefly talked over, and the recommendations on the right. So staff is recommending a 25-foot reasonable distance definition, allowing smoking designated areas to be included in the ordinance, but not a requirement. And then, including the clause identifying other tenants as third-party beneficiaries for enforcement, but not recommending smoking sections for public events. So that completes the presentation, happy to receive any comments or questions.
Okay, thank you. Council members, questions? No questions of staff? Okay, so you were asking to see, you were seeking clarification on whether or not we thought there should be designated smoking areas for public events? Is that what Andrew stood you to say?
That's one of them, yes.
Okay, and you're suggesting no?
No, that's the only one we're recommending not to do.
So maybe we should start with that. I'm good with no at public events. I don't know how other council members feel, but that's, that's the one thing you're going to need clarification on. But there would be designated smoking areas in multifamily homes.
That is what we're recommending.
Not homes, multifamily.
Dwel-, yeah.
Dwelling developments, yeah.
That is what we're recommending.
Right, okay, well then maybe I should just go to public comment first.
No public comments, Madam Mayor.
No public comments, all right, then-
Are we voting on each one, or are we just making the recommendation, or just saying yes to staff to bring them back?
We're providing-
I suggest doing a kind of thumbs up, thumbs down on the four recommendations. Staff will then bring an ordinance back for you, for you to, to be introduced to you.
Okay, well, let's do it that way, so we can all see on the screen, right, in front of us or up there. How's everybody on staff's recommend, the first recommendation by staff, which is to keep, to use 25 feet as the preferred reasonable distance to place around smoking prohibited areas. Okay, that appears to be unanimous, and then allowing designated smoking areas to be included for multifamily housing properties.
So the only thing I want to discuss before we talk about this is that we, we tried this in our parks, remember? And it was, there were places where people could smoke in parks.
It was just the parking lot.
We ended up, we ended up taking that out. Actually, it was more than the parking lot. At Arroble, you could smoke on the trail, there was a specific spot, I had cigarette drop and everything, it wasn't just in, in there. There was an actual designated spot in the park to smoke. I don't think it works. It, I mean, I understand the buffering and stuff would, would probably work, but to tell somebody that they cannot smoke in their units, but then they can find a designated space, I don't think that that's going to stay in that designated space. So for, for this one, I would recommend that, that, that there is no designated space inside multifamily, that's where I'm going. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm not going to agree with that, but that's, okay.
I just, you know, what comes to mind is like Alexander and the way it's built, like, it would contain the smoke instead of letting it escape, especially, you know, because outside the boundaries of that area is all public area. So if they could control any area, it'd be within those walls of those buildings, and it, it would just defeat the purpose of having a designated area at all.
Which I think is the same way it defeats the purpose in the public event. There's no, there's no place in a public event you can go and hide, and you're not going to smell the cigarette smoke or secondhand smoke for whatever.
But a public event is something you choose to attend or not, we're talking about where someone lives. You're saying that you're not allowed to smoke where you live, anywhere.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that we don't allow people to do in their homes.
Okay, okay, so that's it, so we have, we know that one council member at least, if, if not more, so the, the, I'm asking for a thumbs up. A thumbs up means you're going with staff's recommendation, which is to allow a designated smoking area in multifamily housing properties. That's what thumbs up means, so do thumbs down if you feel that there should not be any designated smoking area at all in multifamily developments. Okay, so we need to see hands. So I see one down, I see two down, oh, go ahead.
Could I, but is this mandating then? Basically, you're mandating by saying you want a, a designated place? Our recommendation was to allow it.
Yeah, it's not mandated, it's, it's, it's at the option of the, yeah. Right, okay, so I saw two thumbs down? Right, two down and the rest are up, so that one goes. All right, the next one is, should the ordinance require including a clause in multifamily housing leases identifying all other tenants as third-party beneficiaries for enforcement? Also recommended by staff, so is that thumbs up everyone? All right, that, that one has one down, one no, so six yes, one no. And the last one, should designated smoking sections be allowed in public event permits with similar requirements? So this would apply to something like the Garlic Festival, this is saying there is no smoking allowed, if, if you don't have, right, this would be-
It's hard to hear you, Tom, I'm just-
Yeah, I can't hear you, is your microphone on?
Oh, sorry, sorry. There are three exceptions in the code, that number one being the Garlic Festival, they allow areas at the event to have smoking.
I know, but this is saying to no longer do that. That's why I'm trying to clarify for everybody, this would mean that at any public event in Gilroy, you're saying there is no place that anybody can legally smoke. You can legally do pot, but you can't legally use a cigarette, okay?
No, no, hold on, I, I know that's a joke, but that's not true. This is secondhand smoke for everything, doesn't matter where it's coming from, it's not legal or not legal.
Okay.
No, no secondhand smoke.
Okay, well, I'm supporting that there not be, so it doesn't matter for me, but I just want to make it clear-
Well, no, you said that it was legal to, to smoke one and not the other. You did say that.
Yeah, I did say that. Okay, so, sorry, is there a question still?
No, just restate it.
I'm, I'm, a thumbs up means you're supporting staff's recommendation, which is not to recommend, which is against having designated smoking areas for public events.
Isn't that like, I, I even, I'm confused with that, that's almost like a double negative.
Okay. Okay, thumbs up means you support no designated smoking area.
Okay.
That's thumbs up, because that's what staff's recommendation is, no, thumbs down means-
Wait, wait, you can't, no, you can't say, you're just, staff's saying not recommended, but the question says should designated smoking sections be allowed? Yes or no? A thumbs up says yes, they should be allowed, a thumbs down says no, they should not be, and staff is saying go with the should not be. It's not, you're saying it wrong.
I don't think I am, because I'm using, I'm saying the staff recommendation thing and you're looking at the other side.
Should designated smoking sections be allowed?
Guys, I am asking, I am saying for this council to put a thumbs up if you do not want designated smoking areas at public events. Thumbs down means you do. I'm sorry if that's opposite to you, but that's what we're saying, okay? All right, so I, Carol?
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I'm going with the opposite, yes.
You're saying, what you're saying is no designated smoking areas.
Right.
For public events.
Correct.
Okay, so Councilmember Bracco was a no, Councilmember Klein is a no, so we have two people who would support designated smoking areas in public events, and five who say, let's not at public events. and five who say, let's not at public events. Is that clear? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good, so we're, we're good on that.
We're clear.
All right. Yay. Okay, so now we're 11.6. A lot of people are waiting for this one. Report on quality of life officer activity. You're going to pass off to?
Madam Mayor, members of council.
Okay, guys, hello?
Public.
We're, we're on a, okay.
I am bringing up Captain Lou Powell, he's our operations manager. We also have the quality of life officers fall under the community engagement team under operations, and they are supervised by Sergeant Lamont Tony, who's here too. And we have Corporal, our quality of life Corporal Bobby Griffith, and Officer Cameron Helms. So we're going to give you an update of, of their efforts, and I will be available, so will Captain Powell for questions after he's done here.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm here to, to provide you an update on the two-year Quality of Life Officer Pilot Program. On November 1st, 2021, the city council authorized the implementation of the Quality of Life Pilot Program. The goal of this program was to proactively address quality of life crimes and concerns. Their report will discuss the efforts made by the Quality of Life Team over the first 10 months of the program. The two Quality of Life Officers were selected and began their assignment on March 8th, 2022. They typically work Tuesday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., but often adjust their schedule depending on project or assignment needs. The first two officers selected for the Quality of Life Pilot Program were Corporal Bobby Griffith, Officer Cameron Helms, and they are supervised by Sergeant Lamont Tony. During their tenure at the Gilroy Police Department, Bobby and Cameron have time and time again demonstrated their compassion for this community and their ability to provide a balanced application of the law by weighing the needs of the individual, the desires of the community, and their duty to serve. They have been able to apply this forward-thinking contemporary law enforcement approach to this pilot program. Both QOL officers have training in crisis intervention and de-escalation tactics. They have received additional training in principled policing, procedural justice, and implicit bias, which focuses on policing practices that emphasize respect, listening, neutrality, and building trust. In fact, Bobby is an instructor of this subject matter and has provided training to the entire Gilroy Police Department, while Cameron has training in restorative justice. The early portion of Bobby and Cameron's time in this new assignment was spent meeting with other law enforcement agencies who have had Quality of Life Officers or similar programs for some time and gleaning from them what has worked and what has not worked. And this is the legwork, help, and this legwork has helped us get a better understanding of what the best practices were within our area. The most important takeaway from these meetings was that creating partnerships with local unhoused service providers was paramount and vital for achieving long-term success. Since the program's inception, Bobby and Cameron have established connections with local unhoused service providers, including Home First, South Valley, South County Compassion Center, Goodwill Strive, Carry the Vision, Abode Services, Santa Clara County Behavioral Health Services, Mobile Crisis, St. Joseph's Family Center, Pit Stop Outreach, and the Salvation Army. Bobby and Cameron have also established relationships with many members of the unhoused community, so much so that many of the unhoused community know Bobby and Cameron by their first names. The Quality of Life Officers have made it routine to offer services to each and every unhoused individual they encounter. Bobby and Cameron understand that the needs of each unhoused person vary greatly and have an understanding of which one of our unhoused service providers, excuse me, could best help that person. Our Quality of Life Officers have been able to connect over 60 people with our unhoused service providers, which has resulted in at least 10 of those individuals receiving some form of housing. One of the primary goals of the Quality of Life Officer Pilot Program is to find long-term solutions to improve the quality of life for the entire, entire Gilroy community. Enforcement actions have not, have never been the Quality of Life Officer's primary objective when contacting an unhoused individual, especially when the complaint was related to their unhoused status, like sleeping in a park or camping in a water canal. Conversely, if a call for service was related to an unknown, an unhoused individual's criminal activity or actively committing a crime, then enforcement would be a necessary action. There has been a number of legal decisions that have affected law enforcement's ability to enforce laws, and many of these legal challenges have manifested in a visible increase in the number of unhoused individuals in our community and throughout the state over the past few years. I will list a few of these legal challenges and provide a brief description of them. In 2011, Assembly Bill AB 109 realigned the state prison system to reduce overcrowding, but four state prison inmates downed at the county jails. The county jails had little time to prepare for this mass influx of inmates. So counties were forced to release on probation the nonviolent inmates. In 2014, Proposition 47 passed, which lowered many felony crimes to misdemeanors. This was another step to lower inmate population by easing the burden on county jails, which were still struggling with the ramifications of AB 109 from three years prior. With the passage of Prop 47, peace officers were now required to issue citations, much like a traffic ticket, to many criminal violators who would have been previously arrested and booked into county jail. In 2016, Proposition 57 was passed, which enabled the state prison system to grant early release of prison inmates that were considered nonviolent after serving only one-third of their prison sentence. Prop 57 also redefined what constitutes a nonviolent crime. An example of just a couple of those nonviolent crimes are assault with a deadly weapon other than a firearm, force likely to produce great bodily injury, battery with serious bodily injury, solicitation to commit murder, domestic violence resulting in injury, inflicting corporal injury upon a child, rape where a person is prevented from resisting by drug or rape of an unconscious person. Just to list a couple. In 2019, the Supreme Court ruled in Martin versus the City of Boise affected law enforcement's ability to enforce laws related to the unhoused community. The Supreme Court ruled, among other things, that enforcing criminal laws or city ordinances that ban sleeping and/or camping on public property was a violation of an individual's Eighth Amendment right, inflicting cruel and unusual punishment. In April 2020, with the unknown threat of COVID-19, the state imposed a temporary zero bail practice, which removed the bail amounts on all nonviolent criminal acts. This again reduced the jail population because those who did not have the funds to post bails could be released without any form of collateral. These legislative decisions have created an environment where the criminal justice system lacks the teeth to impose treatment programs on those who have behavioral, mental, and/or substance abuse challenges. When Bobby and Cameron were appointed to this position, they, along with Sergeant Tony, myself, and Chief Esminosa, met with the Santa Clara County District Attorney's Office and the City of Gilroy Attorney, the city attorney, to discuss local and state laws, violations that were and continue to be observed in our, in areas of our community. There were several criminal violations that the district attorney's office said they would not prosecute. For crimes that they would potentially prosecute, they recommended that we first build a case on an individual that submit, and then submit the case to the district attorney's office for review. Building a case typically involves giving warnings, documenting each warning in a report, and allowing time for that individual to correct the behavior. After repeated warnings and demonstrating a pattern of noncompliance, then the district attorney's office will take the case into consideration for prosecution. Building a case also includes trying to get a community member to cooperate with the prosecution of the individual, like a private property owner who is willing to press charges for trespassing. With this being understood, these two QOL officers have handled over 400 quality of life-related calls for service, which is 54% of all the QOL, QOL-related calls for the Gilroy Police Department. They've offered referral service to well over 500 individuals. They've given 59 verbal warnings, wrote 47 police reports, made 19 arrests, and towed three vehicles. On July 5th, 2022, the City of Gilroy, I'm sorry, the Gilroy City Council voted in favor of police officers enforcing laws in city parks and on city property, all the while taking into consideration the Martin versus City of Boise court decision. The council also voted in favor of the city conducting cleanups and clearups of encampments on city property after first making every effort to gain voluntary compliance from unhoused individuals occupying these areas. The Quality of Life Officers assisted the Water District with six cleanups since March of 2022. Each cleanup typically takes about three days, and Bobby and Cameron assisted the security, with security for the cleanup crews and offered referral services to those that were contacted during the cleanups. The Quality of Life Officers have also assisted with the coordination and execution of two city-led encampment cleanups. The first cleanup was under the IOF Bridge just east of Monterey. Bobby and Cameron discovered that unhoused individuals occupied the encampment had dug into the foundation of the bridge to make the space more inhabitable. The team contacted the Public Works Department, who inspected the bridge and determined that the occupants of the encampment had to immediately vacate the location due to prevent further damage to the bridge. Bobby and Cameron worked, along with our unhoused service providers, to get all the unhoused individuals in the encampment to relocate. Another example of the QOL officer's work within the community was the work in the canal next to Gilroy Prep and South Valley Middle Schools. In early 2022, there was a small fire in the canal associated with a large unhoused encampment next to the prep school. There was also an incident where an unhoused individual was near the fence of the school and caused concern among the school staff and parents. Cameron and Bobby worked with the school district to identify the property in question as being the school district's property. The Quality of Life Officers assisted the school district with posting proper signage and warning the individuals occupying the encampments on private property. Again, with the help of our unhoused service providers, the Quality of Life Officers were able to get all the unhoused individuals to voluntarily move away from the school district's property. This allowed the school district to properly clean the area and post those trespassing signs. The second city coordinated cleanup was Miller Slough between Monterey Street and Church. The Quality of Life Officers provided security for the cleanup crews, provided advance notice to the unhoused occupants prior to the cleanup date, and worked with our unhoused service providers to make the process as easy as possible. The Quality of Life Officers also assisted several private property owners with cleanup of their property. Bobby and Cameron assisted these owners by educating them on the rights as owners, as well as conducted enforcement action on private property at their request. They also assisted the owners with creating proper signage to prevent future trespassing. These are just a few examples of the work Bobby and Cameron are doing within the community. Moving forward, the Quality of Life Officers will continue to identify locations within the city that need cleanup. If the location is on city property, the police department will make recommendations and coordinate with other city departments to accomplish that task. If a cleanup is needed on private property, Bobby and Cameron will work to continue, will continue to work with property owners to accomplish this objective. Our goal is to evolve with our community's needs and continue to employ strategic responses to address complaints. This continues to be a complex community concern that relies heavily on our ability to continue to build partnerships. At this time, I'd like to field any questions regarding the Quality of Life Officer Pilot Program.
Thank you, that was an excellent report, very thorough. I'm looking to council members to see if you have any questions. Otherwise, I'll, Councilmember Barco.
How often are the officers actually getting out to the encampments?
Sure. So majority of their day. I don't have a specific number, but most of their day is spent out in the field, making contacts, working with the unhoused community, and working with our service providers. The first few months of the program, it was less time spent in the field because we were trying to understand what other communities are doing, to learn from them. So it's increased over time.
And, in, in your report, it, it said about those that don't want any help.
Yes, sir.
What are we doing with those folks?
So eventually, it's, it will come down to enforcement. So we have programs, we have services, we offer the service as much as possible. If we do not gain compliance, the final step would be enforcement action. And that's part of working with the DA's office to build those cases and then submit it to the DA's office for prosecution.
Okay, and have, have any of them moved back underneath the bridge on IOF?
I believe so, no? Sorry, thinking of the wrong bridge. They corrected me, no.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, well, now I see Councilmember Hilton and Councilmember Armandaris here.
Okay, I'm up here too, but.
Yeah, I'm not seeing you and I'm not seeing.
She was before me.
How do you?
Yeah.
Okay, who wants to go, because I?
I'll go, oh, okay. Well, since I was first here on the list, I just want to say that was really an excellent report, very thorough. And I feel so sorry for you gentlemen, because your hands are tied by what the laws have done. Because we can look at the graph, and I don't want anyone walking away saying, oh, wow, this is great. Look, look, hardly anyone's being arrested. If we had the laws to protect them, there'd be, I mean, if we didn't have these laws protecting the unhoused, a lot more would have been arrested, because you cert, we certainly cannot sit back and say that there is no crime in Gilroy, when we listen to the business owners all the time talking about what's happening. You look at next door, you hear what's happening with the residents. It's just a very sad situation, and you guys deserve triple your salary for what you're putting up with. It's just, it's unbelie, unbelievable is all I can say of what society's putting up with, all over the country.
It is a unique challenge right now, but we are staying positive. And we also are looking for long-term solutions. And I don't think enforcement is necessarily a long-term solution. It's a temporary solution, so we got to figure out how we bridge the gap between short-term and long-term solutions.
Okay, who is going next?
I think Zach was next.
Okay, I only see two on my screen.
I can't, yeah, I can't turn it, I don't.
Okay, so Councilmember Hilton, do you want to go next?
He can go.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
I can't find it.
Now you're skipping me.
Ladies first.
I know, I miss our old machine, it was easier to use. I was just gonna thank the, the officers for helping in, in such a compassionate way and referring so many people to services. I know in particular, these past couple of weeks with the flooding, we were able to get people in at the armory in an expedited way. They didn't have to wait for, you know, the process from the phone number, because you guys helped them. And folks were really worried about, you know, the flooding and being able to, to come out of it, you know, healthy and with some of their blessings, some of their belongings. So, so thank you for doing that for them.
Okay, either Councilmember Tovar or Hilton?
I'll go.
Okay.
First of all, I want to, I want to commend you guys for a job well done. I know sometimes you may hear some negative feedback about our police officers, and I know most of it is untrue. And I want to just personally congratulate you and thank you and let you know how much we appreciate you all. Going back to sort of the slide with arrests, because I know one of the things, and I don't know if this is something that, that you'd be able to answer, maybe it's for our fire chief. One of the concerns that I kept hearing over the course of time is the number of encampment fires, right? Obviously, how dangerous that is, not only for the individuals there, but surrounding businesses and homes. Have you seen a decrease in those, that, those type of fires since Quality of Life Officers have been involved? I don't know if that's.
I don't think we've seen a decrease. No, I can't say that we've seen that, sorry.
Okay, well, yeah, no, I just, I, I know it's a concern, and I'm, I'm not sure how we prevent that, obviously, but again, I just, again, I, I commend you guys, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you for the report, Captain, and thank you for your guys' work. I know this is a tough assignment, and I hope that there's support out there to, mental support for you as well, too, because it's, it's hard to look at that every single day, so I, I appreciate that. When I was looking back at the November 2021 staff report when we approved the two-year Quality of Life Pilot Program. the two-year Quality of Life Pilot Program for a cost of eight hundred ninety thousand dollars for two years, in that report, there was projections given, a potential number of proactive contacts that the Quality of Life Officers could make in a year, you know, based on a full-time team. It was based on the averages of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen overtime teams, and that contact said that there would be three thousand one hundred and twenty-seven contacts. That was just a projection, and currently, since the program launched March twenty twenty-two, the two officer team, which was reported earlier and in the staff report, says that there's been four hundred calls for service, and then the other verbal warnings and police reports as well. So, that's less, that's less calls or less contacts than in twenty eighteen, which is four hundred forty-five. You know, when we first began tracking this data, and we've seen a sixteen percent increase in that point in time of homelessness. My question is, can you talk about the reasons on why you think that that projection of three thousand one hundred twenty-seven doesn't match the current context of four hundred?
Four hundred thirty-five.
Definitely. There's two factors. The first one, those numbers that were projected in the November staff report were based off two officers working overtime, strictly handling just those calls. So, they didn't take additional calls for service, which these two officers are doing now. So, they have calls for service, they're doing follow-ups, they're going out, and they're spending more time with the people in the community versus just trying to get the numbers. So, that's why the numbers are reduced, because they're actually spending more time with the individual rather than just trying to fill us full of stats. The second factor is in September, we adopted a new records management system, which we're still trying to work through and figure out how we can get our statistical data from the new system. So, I'm hopeful by this time next year, we'll have very good accurate data for you.
That's awesome, and that's really what I'm trying to get at, because, you know, it was talked about in November that, you know, we had surplus at the time, we could fund this program, but that when all this data starts coming back to us, now when we're doing the next two-year budget, if we want to continue this program, all these options are on the table, and, you know, one of the things that was, that was brought back in that, that projection was that the proactive contacts per hour was at one point seven eight, and it seems like we're doing a lot more deep work than just making contacts. So, that's something that I would look at, and it's fine, if it's, if it's like, hey, we had to spend six hours as opposed to one point seven eight, then I think that's completely appropriate, and that would help me in making the decision on whether this is something we should fund in that next two-year cycle. Thank you.
Thank you for this suggestion.
Okay, I'd like to go to public comment then, next.
Three speaker cards were received. First one is Ron Kirkish, followed by Marty Estrada, followed by Tim Cassidy.
Okay, thank you.
Hello again. We saw the pictures of these encampments, and they're stark, they're horrible. About two, three weeks ago, I got a call to go to the, from a business owner at the old Gilroy Dispatch Building, and they wanted to let me know that they've been having homeless problems there and fires propping up. So, I went next door to the business, the electrical business next door. I asked them, have you been having problems too? They go, Ron, we have so many problems. They don't only have fires, but they jumped my fence, they break the car windows and steal my stuff, they broke into my business and stole stuff. You guys can only do so much. I sure you know what I'm talking about. They're, you know, if we don't refund them, and if we don't hire more, it is going to get worse. We need to protect our city, our businesses, these guys are doing the best they can. We need the council to step up and do more. Also, I'd like to say, the gentleman, the captain spoke about AB one oh nine, forty-seven, fifty-seven. Well, we also have a DA that has a agenda called bending the arc. When he bends the arc, what he's meaning is, if I, if our police department finds a person and arrests him for having meth in their car, having warrants, he's not going to do anything. This is what our police officers have to deal with. We had an opportunity to help a person clean up their act, arrest him, and hopefully get him into rehab or something like that, but know that he's back on the street, and these officers still have to deal with it. That's not fair to the officers, it's not fair to our community. We need a DA that's going to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Councilmembers, City Chief Police, Espinoza, great job, and gentlemen, we value your participation supporting the homeless. Two officers or three officers can't do this task correctly. I used to work as a homeless coordinator in San Jose, we had a team of officers, a team, twelve, that would come out and they would rotate. What we can do as a solution is go after federal and state grants that provide homeless interdictions with nonprofits. If we work together with the city and we get these grants, we can augment these officers by providing supportive manpower to provide that service. I worked in Gilroy twelve years ago, and in that time, we had a homeless, homeless task force under, under Chief Turner here in Gilroy. We took a lot of folks off the street, we provided them housing, I went to San Jose, and I fought for a hundred vouchers, chronically homeless vouchers from the, right there at the Housing Authority. They wanted to give them all to San Jose, I fought for them, I got a hundred here, and we housed a hundred families and individuals here in Gilroy off the streets, and we did case management, intensive case management, and they stayed off the street. So, we need a bigger effort, because the efforts that these officers are doing are great, but it's just a Band-Aid. We need to support that by getting grants, or state grants, if the city can get federal grants, we can, we can split that money and do some great work here in the city and to remove the blight that's, that's these folks that are out there that are homeless. And, and, and just to share, these folks are, there's a lot of issues. They're either homeless, they have mental issues, they have drug issues, but a lot of them also are just homeless, they don't have a place to go. We dealt with a lady here that was homeless for quite some time, and she was living right here at Eagle Ridge, and we went there, we tried to get her out every week with the police, and she was a frequent flyer mile lady, she would always go there, and we, they did the track, we asked, I asked the chief of police to do the track, they spent, I don't know, two thousand man-hours on one person. So, what I'm saying is that there's different techniques that we can use, but we got to be collectively working together. We should do a forum, a community forum of nonprofits that are willing to put some stake in the ground and support the homeless with the officers, and then create a, a system that's going to better affect these folks that are homeless, that are lost out there, because there's a lot of folks that we ran into that just needed a roof over their head. They needed somebody to help them with their, manage their, their income in terms of their social security benefits, and, and those that needed drug addiction issues, that needed rehab, and we were able to help them. But it's, it's, it's a hodgepodge of stuff, and we're not going to solve the solution by saying, hey, interdiction, go down there, clean it out, because the last time we did this in Gilroy, I, I opposed the city council at that time, it says, do not do this, they removed all these folks from this encampment, and then they all went to downtown Gilroy, and they stood downtown in front of the coffee shop, in front of the donut shop, right there by Dweener Sitso on First Street. So, that's not a solution either.
I'm sorry. Your, your, your time is up. Thank you, Marty, thank you. Next speaker. Thank you. Next speaker.
Tim Cassidy.
I have a really unique aspect, this is actually happening to me right now. As I said before, I grew up in Los Gatos, among millionaires, my dad was really wealthy. In the last month, since the thirty-first of January, I've become homeless. I'm living in the Armory, actually, I now self-deported out of the Armory because I've been threatened by just one individual, and the one individual is, I think the people we're talking about with the encampments, they call them tweakers. So, these are people that have the ability to migrate and move amongst really different populations, people who actually are really on their own and independent, and then this one individual that moved into the Armory, he's a real bad fellow, and he threatened me six times, and he actually has a lot of resources. I've overheard conversations with him, he moves technology and money around, and he has actual vast amounts of money, thousands of dollars, and the rest of us in the Armory just don't have anything, and here's what I call the ninety-ten rule. Ninety percent of the things and the people in, in the Armory can be solved by like ten percent resources. So, for me, right now, I need thirty-five dollars to get a driver's license to pick up a Western Union that I need for my brother from Texas. I cannot go to Western Union without my ID, I've lost my ID two, two times in the last month, so I don't have a driver's license. So, without a driver's license, I can't get money from Western Union. Without money from Western Union, I can't get my iPhone because I don't have a cellphone. So, I have an iPhone fourteen waiting for me at Verizon, and that would allow me not to just go from the Armory, to jump back into my world of being a landscape architect, right? So, I'm now stumbling, and I actually can't go to the Armory tonight, I don't have money, I haven't eaten since yesterday. I almost fainted in my chair three times, and I had to go out to the bathroom, and the thing is, when I go into, and this is the whole thing with VTA and cold and the sort of perfect storm with what's going on in my life, is these tiny little things. At night, I can't do anything, I have to kind of just hibernate and try a place to hide, so I try to jump on buses, but like I talked to one gentleman, Zach, you can't jump on a bus, and because they discriminate and they think you're homeless. And so, the problem is everywhere you get shut down, and then again, family is the, is the real key, because if you have slight issues like mental health, they start to shut down because they see a history of the shutdown, and they see history. I'm actually not in acute issues with, with mental health, I've had issues when I was in school at Berkeley, I'm actually mentally really stable. It's my issue right now is like literally thirty-five dollars.
I'm sorry.
Two hundred dollars to get my cellphone. Once that, it's done, I'm like.
Is the time up?
Free person.
Okay, that, that, I'm, thank you, I'm sorry. Okay, no other public speakers, correct?
No other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so this was just receive report. Does anyone else have anything else they need to say? Otherwise, we can all just go, wow, leave it at that. Okay. All right, so with that, we're, Chief, good? Okay, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, thank you for all the feedback, and when we developed this mission profile, we were, we wanted to make sure that we didn't set the officers to fail. And so, again, it was mentioned that it's, it's a complex community issue that requires a community comprehensive approach. We're only a small piece of what we're dealing with, and we're, we're learning, we're evolving, and kudos to them, they, they put in ahead, the work ahead of time and visited other programs, and we developed what we thought was a best practice approach. But again, we, whatever the community needs are, we could readjust, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Again, from all of us. Thank you all for being here. Okay, item twelve, the City Administrator's Reports. I'd like to open public comment first, if anybody has something that they wish to comment on under City Administrator's Reports, this would be the time.
I do have one speaker card, Madam Mayor, and it is from Marty Estrada.
Okay. Do we have a speaker or not?
The, Mr. Estrada would like to speak after the presentation.
There are two presentations. Okay, that's, fine. Yeah, I mean, normally, public comment is when we say, but if it's, if it's, if you want to go ahead and let it be after, then that is fine. Okay. So, we are about to hear Strategic Plan Presentation. And that is being given by?
Madam Mayor, members of council, community members. We wanted, we, during the December meeting, when we gloutly announced that we were awarded a BSCC grant in the amount of a little bit of a million dollars, we, we mentioned that we were going to come back to council with the newly approved strategic plan for the following three years for the South County Youth Task Force. And important to mention that this is the eleventh year of the existence of the task force, and Councilmember Barco was there from the outset, so was Bernice, and under the leadership of Chief Denise Turner. And so, today I have, from the South, from the District Attorney's Office now, the program manager, Bernice, I let up Tony, another Tony in the room, and also, we have our South County Youth Task Force Coordinator, Sandra Cruz. And so, they're going to go over the strategic goals for the, the task force, and obviously, after this will be the strategic plan. Also, I, I want to share with council that I will be Chair of the Task Force for this calendar year. So, all yours.
Thank you, Chief Espinoza. So, Madam Mayor and our honorable members of the council, my name is Bernice, I'm the South County Task Force's Program Manager, and with me is Sandra Cruz, the Coordinator, and we're here to share with you our strategic plan for the next couple of years. Totally excited about this. Next slide, please. And I am two weeks back from eternity leave, so bear with me as I'm navigating, I, I like this space, I'm like, ooh, technology's all right here. So, as Chief Espinoza said, we started in two thousand twelve, it really grew in two thousand thirteen, as a regional collaboration made of faith-based, community-based agencies, local government agencies and county agencies, and community members from Morgan Hill, San Martín, and Gilroy. We're funding through different initiatives, through the local, county, estate partners. We seek our own funding and grants, we've secured a total of over four million dollars that is additional to support the city has given us in positions, Sandra Cruz, the one coordinator position, and that goes, most of it, ninety percent goes to community-based agencies. We've served over thirteen thousand unduplicated family members and youth. That's not with the funds that go to community events. Community events serve many more thousands of folks. We also are guided by our strategic plan, so we don't just do things on a whim, we ask community in need for feedback, we ask our hotspots, we call them hotspots, in communities of Gilroy and Morgan Hill, we ask what they feel they need, because it's important to co-create programs, co-create strategies with our community, so we know that we're doing what they want us to do. And on, on the presentation, you can see our mission and vision statement, which has been updated. So, what we did is our new strategic plan, which is Project To Thrive, really builds upon our two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty-one strategic plan, Thrive. This is a working subcommittee, so from the policy team that we have and a tech team, that is the movers and shakers, and then their supervisors are on the policy team. We have working committees, some committees focus on restorative justice and restorative practices, some focus on racial equity, others focus on mental health conditions and mental health resources, and we have a committee that focuses on this strategic plan. We were all trained in restorative practices, that's a very important framework for the South County Youth Task Force. Love it that we did, that they did share, we have trained our community officers, we've trained our SROs, we've trained different partners within government and community-based agencies and restorative practices, and it's through listening circles where we went out in time of COVID, and we held thirty listening circles. Listening is super important, right? We love to speak, but it's very challenging to hold back and hear from our community what they feel is needed for them to uplift their voice and then take that as an initiative that we're going to work into the future. In these restorative listening circles, topics emerged that were created into themes, and then they were created into goals for the strategic plan. Important to say that multiple topics emerge that you're going to hear about it, and it's really important that we hear from the perspective of what can we do to elevate their voice and what can we do to create solutions for our youth and families.
Thank you, Bernice, and before we walk you through the strategic goals, just a brief recap of the over, of the roadmap we took to get to the strategic plan. We had a community engagement and stakeholder process phase about a year ago, February through April of last year, where we engaged in community listening circles like Bernice shared. In June of last year, we went to our policy team and presented the guiding principles and strategic themes. In September, we worked together with the Strategic Plan Committee to be able to present a first draft that incorporated all the elements to our policy team, and they recommended certain items be added, certain items be incorporated. And they recommended certain um, items be added, certain items be um, incorporated that um, they'd like to see. In November, we went back with a final uh, draft, which they approved. It was a huge undertake and it um, included a lot of community um, partners to be able to get to this draft. Currently, we are working on translating the strategic plan into Spanish. And uh, we're also working with our strategic committee to be able to create the work plan that will guide us through um, steps of how to accomplish the goals that um, we set forward. In uh, March, we will uh, go back to our policy team to present the work plan. And uh, we hope to be able to adopt the work plan that details steps on how to accomplish the goals. In May, and we are also in the process of work going back to listening circles to share the strategic plan with the community that um, that we received input from. So these are our five strategic goals. Through a third-party consultant, these five goals were developed based on community stakeholder input and data taken directly from listening circles that Bernice shared about. This data was sorted on charts. And we had pages and pages of information that took the committee several sessions to process with the consultant. These five themes kept coming up consistently throughout the different circles. And that is why this is, these are the five themes that we're focusing on as goals for the next three years. Each goal has about three to five objectives. They don't necessarily say how these goals will be accomplished. And um, the, however, the strategic committee will collectively work on a work plan to be able to set forward specific steps on how we will accomplish these goals in South County. So goal number one has to do with after-school opportunities and safe spaces for youth. Goal number two, support for youth through local education systems. Goal three, community engagement and safety. And goal four and five have to do with internal SEYTF functions and processes. Number four is SEYTF governance and structure. And goal number five is data performance, measurement and sustainability for the work. And um, to walk us through goal number one, I'll invite Bernice to um, come back up.
It's really important to say that the youngest participants in our circles were at five and six-year-olds. And our elders were eighty and eighty-five-year-olds. What we heard over and over was in order to really support our youth, we need intergenerational support. It can't just be youth for youth. It has to be us coming together, because that is only how traumas are going to be healed for our youth and by the adults that have youth as parents. Our first goal is around having accessible opportunities and safe places in the afternoons and evenings. We know where our kids are during the day. For the most part, they're in school. And there is a goal that talks about if they're not in school, how do we reintegrate them? But everybody felt that we need to save places where they could develop their leadership, make positive connections with caring adults, and make sure that our programs are pro-social, diverse, inclusive and gender-responsive. A young man means very different things than a young woman. And we need to look at that as we support our youth moving forward. Our, our objectives that you see on the screen here, one, two, three, is really to use the expertise of youth in creating and cultivating programs that they feel they want and they need, improving research to them, and making sure that we expand and have more free and low-cost opportunities for them to engage. We've all seen the youth at the library. That's become like the youth center. They want a place where they can be safe in the center of their community. And so the center for them is this space where we are right now. So having safe places, it's crucial. That's the, the fourth one, is we need to look at what we have, what is dilapidated and not working, and create better and more equitable access for our youth to be in those facilities. Possibly create new ones, if that's the need. A couple of things, um, let me just go back to this. A couple of their words that they shared on this goal is they have too few days of programming, and again, limited low-cost offerings. Very limited access to existing facilities, or there's inadequate facilities. They feel that we need greater diversity of programs. Case management, again, been there, done that. What else can we do within our community so they don't have to travel outside of our community? Many times, youth don't have vehicles or transportation for that. Outreach and engagement warrants improvements, and youth, again, want to co-design. Oops, sorry. Go ahead. Goal number two is all about supporting our youth through our schools and having ways for youth and families to develop and be part of collaborative network of services that are coordinated with our schools and the community that they serve. It's very important to, objective number one, how do we get kids back into schools in a restorative way? What happens when our youth go into juvenile placements? How do we reintegrate them back and make sure they have what they need to survive and to be thriving? We, we talked and we heard young people say, I can't go to school and pay attention when I'm hungry, when we don't have electricity in the house. So number two is about providing the services and connecting them to resources to make sure they have the basic needs so that they can be in a space to want to go to school. It's also about mental health. How do we connect them and have education around the mental health supports? And address the stigmas and accessibility with barriers. There's a lot of stigma around having a counselor, having a therapist. Some of it's culture, cultural, so we have to make sure we're using a cultural lens for that. Ensuring basic um, needs, we talked about that. And really important is creating equitable services across communities to make sure that we're leading and having conversations with our school and partners. Right, to all of you, how can we work together to create a winning formula to move the needle? And Sandra will take us to goal three.
Goal number three has to do with community safety, engagement and empowerment. Change, uh, changing and improving neighborhood is a partnership between communities that live there and the local government that serves them. Engage and empower neighborhoods disproportionately impacted by crime, blind, poverty, distress, so they can advocate for themselves with local leaders and law enforcement and actively participate in making changes in their community. This has five obje-, uh, five objectives, accomplish goal number three. And a clear example of this was uh, previously incorporated in previous strategic plans. One of them was working with um, promoter leadership capacity agencies. Since two thousand nineteen, we've been partnering with Vision and Compromiso to be able to bring promoter capacity training to local leaders. Our work with San Isidro, Nueva Vida, and East Gilroy, those leaders have been trained and their work has actually grown uh, to be able to serve the larger Gilroy community. That's one clear example of the engagement empowerment uh, work that we've done. And community has requested that we continue working with that. Uh, goal number one is having open dialogue and creating opportunities where community can engage with local government and elected officials. They want to have a closer and open uh, relationship, uh, positive relationship with uh, government and elected officials. Number two is positive relationships specifically uh, between uh, the community and law enforcement to officers to be able to have open dialogue and collaboration to create uh, safer neighborhoods. And this was also addressed in our previous strategic plan, but the community saw it very positive and um, saw that there was a huge impact to um, public safety. Now, these folks that have been engaging with uh, law enforcement um, can call um, are more likely to call for uh, services, which enhances public safety. Uh, number three is creating opportunities for community building, community cohesion, such as party in the park events, national night out. Uh, number four, offer preventative services by co-designing, cooperating with community to be able to address and solve community issues. And then uh, number five, ensure access to basic needs. As um, as it comes to our communities, we saw COVID impact us. We saw the Garlic Festival shooting that impacted our community and being able to um, overcome uh, distress collectively and look, finding local resources and collaborations that will be able to help us meet that. Goal number four has to do with governance and structure to reconnect the policy team to its mission, vision and objectives as delineated in the SEYTF charter. To narrow the policy team's member annual focus to maximize its efforts and outcomes and make improvements to its meeting agendas that can revitalize the functions as a policy team-driven entity. Three objectives, accomplish goal number four. Develop uh, goal number, uh, objective number one is to develop work plans annual to align uh, to the actual strategic plan, which is for the next three years and provide direction um, from the policy team for the uh, South County Task Force overall. And then I'll pass it over to Bernice.
So next steps for us is we're currently, we finalized the English translation of it. We are now finalizing the Spanish, and so we're going to be releasing them together. It's very important, given our population. Funding and sustainability.
Did I skip this? So sorry, did I skip this? So goal number five, this has to do with fi-, funding and uh, service sustainability. So pursue ongoing funding to maintain uh, the current basic service levels that the task force has to measure program and community indicators that provide data to convey needs and be able to articulate those contributions and successes, which then uh, turned into pursuit of additional funds. Um, and I will highlight that um, through this goal, um, we have worked on this uh, throughout the different strategic plans. And just recently, like Chief Espinoza mentioned, we collectively through our um, one of our committees applied for BSCC funding in August. And we were able to uh, receive funding from the state uh, for over a million dollars to support our diversion program. Okay, now I'll pass it over to Bernice. Apologies about that.
So here, we just, we just have our contact information. Um, we're going to be sending everybody our strategic plan in Spanish and English. We're going to be revisiting those four hundred community members and say, this is what your voice created. It's really important that they see that it's not, we're just not taking from the community and listening. We're saying, we hear you, we have it documented, now we're going to work together to make it happen. Um, and we, you know, invite you to interact and participate in our committees and the work in the future. It really is gonna take all of us to move the needle. It's not about just providing services. What are we going to do to make the changes that our community deserves and is requesting? So if you have any questions, our contact information is there. And I'll, will entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you. Okay. Council members? I don't see any, okay, I see Councilmember Hilton on my screen. Go ahead.
Um, fantastic uh, strategic plan. Um, I'm a big believer in strategic plans, um, right? So we all have a vision, we're all on the same page, you've done the deep diving. Um, we don't have to say, well, go back and get more public feedback. You've already done that. I love it. Um, and as policymakers, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's my job uh, to elevate this in any way I can. Of, of all the goals that you have, there's, there's many ways that we're out there um, in different uh, you know, um, available spaces than you are, um, to bring back, to elevate that plan. Um, so thank you for doing that. My one question is, uh, now since we're public with this and it's being recorded, can we, when is the update on the website for the city gonna be done? So that way, this strategic plan can be available in Spanish and English for the community on that website.
So two things. We have our city page that's on the city website. As soon as the Spanish version is done, we're gonna upload it to that. And we also created our own SEYTF, which is W W dot. Se, we'll send it out, SEYThrives. Um, and that what we're hoping to do, and we're gonna create a linked tree, because we want our website to be like a place that you can go for any family resources, whether it's mental health, whether it's pro-social, who's doing what, events in our community. So you'll have it in two different places soon. And that should be done within like the next two weeks.
That's awesome. Okay, Councilmember Armin Darris.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to thank you two and the whole task force for this work. I think it's tremendous. Um, and it says a lot. It reiterates, uh, you know, what we've been hearing from youth. You know, that come here and also families on the street in our previous survey, you know, about the need for facilities, for spaces. Um, I did have a question. Was there any requests or uh, or sharing of um, needs from LGBTQ youth? Yeah, could you speak to that?
Yes, we helped several uh, si-, listening circles for, for youth, and we did have LGBTQ. They're really wanting, that's why the gender responses, just gender responsive, culturally sensitive uh, pro-social and programming is in there. So we want to make sure we're looking at that and through painted respect to that lens. We do, we did have a sage committee that was part of the SEYTF. Um, our fearless leader, Joseph, Joseph has moved on, so we're looking for another co-chair. But that's very critical to the work that we're doing and the lens that we have.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Tovar.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Ladies, I want to thank you for a wonderful presentation, very thorough. And I look, I forward to sort of being involved. One comment or one sort of note that you put on there. I know you guys have done a really good job in inviting us to different events, meet with different groups. But can you make sure that continues to happen? Because um, sometimes I see events going on and it's like, well, how do I get involved with that? You know, I try to reach out to a group or certain, or, and I don't hear back. So if you can continue to uh, send us out to us and inviting us and making us feel that we can be welcome, I'd love to, to join some of those events. Thank you.
Okay, we have one speaker that, right?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Marty Estrada.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Alrighty, this is a long day, a long night. Thank you. City council members and mayor, this is exactly why we need a youth center. See, I'm bringing it back full circle. We need a youth center. Because these folks are doing great work, Bernice and her crew from the uh, uh, South County Task Force. They're reaching out to a lot of youth. A lot of youth in what? Diversion. Diversion program. Why do they need diversion program? Because they're getting in trouble. Issues are going on at school. This is why we need a youth center. And like them, GADAS, GADAS which represents Community Agency Resources Advocacy and Services has also gotten a big round. And we're gonna have a re-, a really great program for youth. And right now, we're, we're, we're bringing in youth twenty-five, fifteen, twenty-five a day. And we're looking now strategically to look, looking for a, a youth hub. A building, a place that youth can go now, because we don't have a youth center. But that's why it's important. We're gonna be at the strategic plan with you guys on that Saturday, because we want to also voice again that we need a youth center. Mr. Brockel told me that it took twenty-three years to build the library. We don't need to do that with youth center. If you all agree, we can, we can see what the community wants in a bond, put in a bond and get this thing built. But we really need a youth center, because it's important for youth. We have over sixteen thousand youth under the cit-, under the cit-, census to twenty-twenty, under eighteen years old here in Gilroy. Now imagine, let's add another few thousand that are eighteen and above. There's a lot of young people in the city that need services. And this multiple uh, youth center that's gonna be a, can be an aquatic center attached to that would be a great addition to the city of Gilroy, but it's more important for your constituents, your families, the families, the, the, the youth. This is why we need a, a better approach, because what we're doing now is a Band-Aid. Even GADAS is doing a Band-Aid approach, because we don't have the bandwidth. There's too many youth that are out there in the streets that are needing services. And instead of going to diversion, we want them to go to a youth center. They can get programming, parents can get programming, they can get, do it together, they can be a, a, a lab, lab for work, homework, tutoring, all that stuff. And then teaching kids how to swim. So there's a lot of things we can do, but we need to, we need to think about doing it now. At least putting a plan together now. It's gonna take, what, four, five years to build? Maybe three, if we do it right, do it fast. We have a place here, we don't have to go through environmental uh, concerns. But we have to do it together. But city council, I, I know you, you say you have it on a plan, you have a plan to build a youth center, but it's not something that's elevated to the level of, is, is this a need that we need to do this today? We need to do it today for tomorrow, for our youth. So please, consider this youth plan, youth center that we want to build together. And let's do it now. Put your legacy on it, put your name on it, that you can be proud of for Gilroy and you, and families. Thank you.
All right, thank you. No others, correct?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so moving on then to twelve point two, which is a video.
Actually, I have just two quick announcements, and then we'll have Bryce start the video.
Okay.
The city is sponsoring a uh, free home repair and safety modification program for qualifying homeowners. That is this Wednesday from eleven to eleven-thirty at the Gilroy Senior Center. It's conducted in English and Spanish. It's conducted in English and Spanish, and it's funded by the city's Community Development Lot Grant. We also have the first public meetings about the Eighth and Alexander Affordable Housing Project. That will go in, I believe it's Wednesday, yes?
Yes.
Wednesday, January 25th, from 6:00 to 7:30, that's a Zoom meeting. And that will also be in English and Spanish and will solicit community input for the affordable housing project. The second thing I wanted to announce to council and everybody that this week is Phase Three implementation of the Enterprise Resource Planning System, and that's a lot of words that really tell you, we're going to move your utility billing from one system to another. That's 15,000 utility accounts that go live to another system, Phase Three. And so I'm sure it will go 100% smooth, fully confident of that, but here's the promise is that we're not shutting anybody's water off. So if you get a crazy bill that says you owe something that you know you don't know, whatever, we'll work through those issues, but just be aware that, you know, something could happen. And so, but we'll, we'll, we'll be very ambivalent and empathetic for everything if you're empathetic with us too. So appreciate that and your patience. Okay, with that, this is a video that we were asked to do by the International City Management Association for their September 2022 conference in Columbus, Ohio. And the reasons why they asked us to do this is because the Gilroy Economic Development Partnership came up with three recreation, or excuse me, economic recovery initiatives. And so they wanted to, for us to, you know, when people say, what are other cities doing? Well, tired of hearing that because this time they want to know what we're doing. And so we got a lot of positive feedback on this video. We have a lot of local celebrities, including one that's in the audience. And I think of the mayor's in this as well, and unfortunately, I'm in it too, which is, it's a little creepy when you have to watch yourself. But all in all, really a lot of positive, we can use this for anyone who's thinking about Gilroy, and we have a short version, a long version, and since we're already here at 9:40, we're going to do the long version for you, but it's about five minutes long.
Oh, thank you. I was going to say, how long is long?
So with that, I'll, I'll, I'll let Bryce take you through it. Thank you.
Gilroy offers our residents a beautiful setting. We're surrounded in mountains, parks, and open spaces. We have outdoor activities for all ages. We have family-friendly fun. We have our Gilroy theme park, Gilroy Gardens. We have great food, good schools, very welcoming environment, lots of charitable organizations with whom you can volunteer, and most importantly, a city staff who really cares about the quality of our city services.
We've all kind of stated that we want Gilroy to be a recreation destination. The vision is shared, it's a common vision, and it's based on the natural assets that we have, including outdoor opportunities. The economy will be outdoor-based, it will be experience-based, and will be something that, you know, will be unique to Gilroy as we, we, you know, take advantage of a lot of the things that we have in this community that many others just don't have.
My relationship with Gilroy precedes me in that my father was born here in 1928. Upon graduating from eighth grade, he joined his older brothers in working the family prune orchards. I grew up on one of those orchards. I remember vividly my father's convictions to knowing who your representatives are and how they're voting and representing you. That led me to run for public office and do my part for the city that I love.
So having been a resident here for 42 years, there's been an incredible journey that I've seen Gilroy go through. In the eighties, our big claim to fame at that time was launching our Gilroy Garlic Festival. As we saw Gilroy become national and internationally known for the Garlic Festival, we then also got to talk a little bit more about what our history has here. And because we are an ag community, we've had a lot of ag products going way back to tobacco in the 1800s and lots of other products along the way. But ironically, our history is still very much alive in our downtown area.
Gilroy offers visitors shopping, dining, lots of outdoor activities, hiking, pedestrian trails, bicycle trails, horseback riding trails, and we have a sports park that right now has soccer fields and baseball fields, and soon we're going to have an ice facility that will be operated by the Samizae Sharks.
The quality of life for, for Gilroy residents is really in the diversity of opportunity they have to, you know, how do they spend their free time? We, we're probably one of the few communities that has a theme park. We have wineries, we have an outlet center, we have retail, we have a downtown, and we have outdoor experiences a lot of communities can't offer. So we, we have it all here, and I think that's suits to just about any resident and what they're looking for in further quality of life.
Well, Gilroy's got a number of different attractions to offer, both on the, on the visitor side, which we really do take advantage of, and making sure that we are able to get, you know, tourism built up here and have visitors coming in. But also from the business side of things, this Gilroy is a great place to do business. We have friendly people, we have a workforce that's available and ready to go to work. And so this really is an opportunity for businesses who are looking for someplace new.
What I'm seeing are a lot of new individuals who are coming into Gilroy. Many from the Bay Area who say, we want to get into a community that is feelings a little bit more open, you've got the, you know, the open space around us, and also a community that's known for welcoming, for hospitality.
Gilroy residents feel very attached to their communities. And speaking as someone who has lived in Gilroy her entire life, I can attest to the number of people that are ready, willing, and able to volunteer for any and all causes.
Gilroy's appeal to its citizens just happens to be its community. The Downtown Live event that's going on tonight, this happens every Thursday night typically for about six to nine weeks throughout the summer, and this is a great event. This brings a lot of the families down to downtown. There's music going on, kids are running around having a great time. Plus, our downtown businesses, our restaurants in particular, get to benefit from all those folks who are coming down and having dinner and just having a great time with, with their families.
Gilroy is a very unique and special place. It is a community that not only looks at its past and recognizes that, but also looks to the future. And I think anybody who's thinking about moving here will realize really quickly that Gilroy is really on the cutting edge of economic development and improving the quality of life for its residents, and also striking that balance with tourism and, and outside, outside visitors.
We were able to develop three key initiatives. One was really more specifically bringing Sharks Ice to Gilroy, developing a mountain bike adventure park that is adjacent to Gilroy Gardens. And then the other was being able to develop and, and to help build out our Gourmet Alley in downtown. We know that will be a tremendous impact on our community, the tax dollars that will come to the city will benefit the entire community. Our mountain bike adventure park will really benefit and really, I think, build up what's already existing at Gilroy Gardens, but now will have a greater appeal from two years old to 92 years old. And then, of course, with Gourmet Alley, we just received a $3.9 million grant, which will benefit some of the cleanup in the Gourmet Alley area and the alley behind the businesses along the railroad track. So this really creates opportunity for more visitors to come to our town.
My vision for the downtown is that we have thriving businesses, that we have pedestrian-only access in certain places, that we create a very inviting atmosphere where people want to be, where families want to be, that we build on the events that we already have.
Gilroy provides a sense of community that many people who have moved here immediately notice and may experience it on a daily basis. And I think a lot of people are learning that it's a great place to visit, but it's also a great place to stay.
Gilroy is a place that's affordable, it's available, and, and people can really get something started here if they're looking for someplace new to start their family.
If you're looking for a place to live, please consider moving to Gilroy because Gilroy is on the move.
All right. Yay. Yeah, that's my first time seeing it, actually. Everyone else has seen, I hadn't seen it yet, yeah. Job Jane, anyone else out there? Yeah. Okay, that brings us to our city attorney's report. Andy, do you have anything?
Well, I, I do, but I think in light of the hour, it's not urgent, we're postponed.
Okay, very good, we have nothing in closed session. So that brings us to adjournment at 9:48 PM. Thank you, everybody who hung in there with us. Good night.